Do you like to form?
I don't have a second hand. And the countdown's on. And he started late. Yeah, or jumped again, yeah. That's probably more apt. I think it's a win-win. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I'm Cole. Mayor Lumberg is on vacation, celebrating her anniversary, so we have a structure where council members, pro tem just means for the time being, where we step in and serve as the function of conducting the meeting, so it's my turn. We'll start with a prayer. I'll offer the prayer today, and then Adam will give us our pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the bountiful lives that we have, for the peace that we enjoy, and we hope to show that gratitude in the way that we conduct ourselves with our neighbors and fellow community members. Please bless us this evening to have wisdom. It's impossible to predict the future, and we need thy help to make decisions that will be in the best interest of our community. And we say that in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Please rise and follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll go ahead and do our roll call, and we'll start over on this side with Lincoln.
Lincoln Jacobs, present.
Van Broderick, present.
Cole Hooley, present.
Steve Stewart, present.
Excellent. Chief... Oh, perfect. I'd like to turn the time over to our chief, who'll be presenting and acknowledging Kelly Johnson and an award that she received.
Thank you. So recently at the Utah Emergency Management Association's conference in St. George, Kelly, you want to step up and come up here real quick? Kelly was awarded the Utah County Community Impact Award, so she was given the... She, well-deserving of this award, and I want to hit a couple of highlights. So this award is basically even because of her leadership and abilities in preparing, responding to and recovering from emergency disasters, critical incidents. And beyond that is what she's done throughout, not only Linden, but pulled partnerships together from multiple communities. A few of those highlights are the Linden CERT program, you'll hear a little bit more about. She implemented a reunification drill at Oak Canyon for the junior high school, which has now been implemented to other schools in the school district. She's currently doing Stop the Bleed Kit coordination with multiple partners to put in schools. The emergency management tabletop exercises, which included 30 entities from the federal level, state, local, and private primary children's hospitals. She put all those things together. Recently, emergency shelter startup, and she received a call from Penguich area, just in case a disaster happened there. They're looking for some possible startup, how they do the shelters. So, other than just those small things, she's done a phenomenal job with her leadership position as well on the local emergency planning committee. She heads up the meetings. She's a huge resource to us, so that, whatever they said down there in St. George, doesn't...
Congratulations, Kelly. Thank you so much for what you do here.
Cole, can I make a comment?
Please.
I'd like to thank Kelly for everything she's done. A number of years ago, I was a bishop in an award here for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and I heard about this Kelly Johnson, who was over the emergency management things of the 9/11. And then I've got to know her since then through youth council and everything else, and just sit watching her expand this position and to have the influence that she has. Just want to express my gratitude for everything you've done and for who you are and what you bring to the position.
That's great. Any other comments for Kelly?
We're just incredibly fortunate to have a Kelly in our city doing the things that she does. Amazing.
Lot of work. Thank you so much. And then Kelly Anderson, we're going to hand over some time to you now to showcase exactly one of the reasons why you've earned this award and recognize others, so that'll be great.
Yeah, I appreciate that. No, my whole point is actually to recognize and appreciate some of the other actors in the city who led themselves towards the same emergency preparedness attitude that we have. I just want to make sure that they are recognized for their service and their impact, for their accomplishments, and also for the value that they add to the community. I actually put together some slides of just kind of what, and this is just one part of emergency management. We have this amazing CERT program in our city. And I put together some slides of just some of the stuff we've done over one year, just the last year. So we did three major qualifying trainings. This is outside of our typical classes. So keep in mind that in order to get a certificate, which some of the folks who are in attendance tonight are going to get a certificate that shows that they completed the CERT program. And that takes between 40 and 50 hours of commitment just to get that certificate. So this is in addition to that, but we have, as you'll see, quite a lot of buy-in into some really great things. So one of the first ones that we did was a...
I hope this is for the video, because I know I'm loud.
Yes, for YouTube, for sure.
One of the first activities that we did last year, this was actually back in July in terms of trainings, was to do shelter operations. Something that we recognized is that there was a gap in capability here in the county and having enough people who are volunteer-trained to do shelter operations and mass care, so that would include feedings and overnight stays if you were to open a shelter. Also includes volunteer management and donation management. So we had the Red Cross come in, and we spent an entire morning learning their classes. We were able to qualify for three out of five necessary classes in order to actually be Red Cross-qualified to open their shelters, but also give us as a community a lot of background to be able to open a shelter ourselves if we needed to. And there were a lot of disparate partners that were involved in that. So we spent the morning doing the classes and the afternoon doing hands-on application, learning how to do client casework, admitting people to a shelter if they needed to, mass feeding, and also how to actually set up the shelter in terms of legally what you need to do and how to make that happen. The next one that we did was called ATC 20. This is for earthquake. This is a program that was started by the Utah Safety Seismic Commission, a seismic safe... one of those things. And ultimately, they determined that if we were to have a large earthquake here in the future, which we will, that we're going to need between 6,000 and 7,000 qualified people to go around and actually look at buildings and see if they're safe to live in. So they started this ATC 20 program, which began in California. It's now been adopted by, I think, eight different states. And we determined that we would host one of those classes here. All the people that completed that are now card-carrying, EMAC-deployable assets for the city and for other states if they need extra help looking at buildings to determine their safety. The next one that we did, this was actually not implied, this was not instigated by me, I should say, it was a Springville CERT. Their fire department decided that they needed help with their fire rehab team. Fire rehab means, for anybody who knows anything about fire, when you go in to fight a fire, they are often in these very heavy suits. They have to have air tanks, and it's completely enclosed. It might be hot, it might be cold, it might be wet. And they have mandatory rehabilitation time. So depending on with their SCBA, how long they've been in the fire, they're going to have to come out every 10 to 20 minutes to get rehabilitation, food, water, check their vitals, warm them up, cool them down, whatever they need. So Springville decided they needed some help with that, and they opened it up to CERT. And we had multiple CERT people from Linden, all of these involved are Linden people, who went down on several Saturdays in a row, got lots of training. And then they were able to actually implement it when they were practicing some ice rescues, so throwing people down in a frozen pond. And our folks stood out in a terrible... that was the snowiest snow we had this whole winter, I think. And they were out there for three days straight, from morning until evening, supporting those firefighters. And hopefully, they drank something hot themselves, because it was a cold, cold day. In addition to that, we were able to participate in some real-world actions. So these included, if you guys remember, sandbagging. There was a lot of sandbagging last year, and our CERT team was able to take on multiple days, multiple parks, where, thanks Juan, where they actually let out in making sure that we were tracking all of the volunteer hours, making sure everybody stayed safe, and really heading up some, spearheading a couple of very specific multi-hour days to make sure that if something happened, we had enough sandbags. You'll see that one of our people there was actually able to sandbag with the governor, so that was kind of fun. In addition, along with our 9/11 drill, we did the inaugural food drive. And that was, our CERT people took the lead on making sure that the volunteer management, the donation management, and the traffic control was working well for that. And they worked in tandem with the mayor's youth council to collect those donations. And they had their hands full. I think this all happened in the first 10 minutes. This is kind of what we have happened in 90 minutes, so we had nearly 10,000 pounds of stuff. And they were, they had to make sure that all of that flowed smoothly and that got sorted properly. And all of that was able to be donated to Tabitha's Way, which you see their truck there. We filled that entire truck, and then they brought in a second one, and we filled that too.
That's awesome.
This was an actual real-world call-out. This was a home that burns down, and unfortunately, there was an individual who was still inside the home. So CERT was called out in order to do some search and recovery, looking for the individual. And she was located, so that was a really unique experience, I think, for our CERT. But that's why we actually start this program, is to be able to help with real-world things. You can see that there was a good, solid turnout. This was another search and recovery that happened just a couple of weekends ago. We also had Linden folks participate in that. This was Maple Mountain. There's a lot of territory to look. And so they're chunking it up in different days and different hours. But I know we had folks out there from 8:00 in the morning till about 2:00 in the afternoon, searching the mountain. And then, of course, there's our classes. I already said that in order to graduate, you actually have to put in between 40 and 50 hours of solid work. So this is one of our MOCs. Have you seen pictures of things like this in the past? But they do search and rescue, light search and rescue, cribbing, fire suppression, carries, medical operations, that learn all kinds of really amazing things that can be useful to our community in actual, real-world call-outs and also in their personal lives. And there's, I think, a couple of pictures of some of our graduating classes from spring of this year and spring of last year. So with that, I just wanted to thank all of the CERT people who are here today. We've got some certificates to hand out. It looks like we have two, three people from the most recent graduating class... four, sorry, missed some. We have several people here from the most recent graduating classes and others who were unable to make it, but I appreciate all of you who are here. And we also have some little badges for you to be able to use in your vests. And mostly, I would just love for everybody here to give you a hand for all that you do and all that you participate in. The teachers, by the way, we have some fantastic teachers who spend time planning out, making sure our supplies are good, coming in and out. Most of what these volunteers are doing are Saturdays and evenings. And that is not to be taken lightly, because they have jobs on top of that. So for everything that you contribute, thank you very much. This is Angie, our program manager, and she's going to be helping give out the certificates. It's for YouTube.
We have Jeff Wilson. We have Dirk Klein. We have Sharon Drake.
I know, this is a little bit embarrassing. Remind me of your name. Nope, Kay.
Is anybody, are we missing anybody?
Are we missing anybody? Okay, and those of you who are already CERT-trained, would you come up and get your new card, please?
I would like to recognize Marie as an instructor. And Wayne as an instructor. If I have to talk in a microphone, you have to come up. Shanna.
And Glenn. As an instructor, and also Spencer for being here. And then, Adam, if you'd like a picture, we can get closer together. We like each other very much.
A card, but I just wanted to kind of recognize our instructors first. They put a lot of time and effort into making our program the great program that it is. They show up early, they set up classrooms, they call equipment, they get a lot of panic emails. They do an amazing job with our amazing program, so.
They do preparedness fairs, they walk in parades. I mean, this is an amazing group. Thank you all.
Thank you all for your service and for being the type of people that will use your talents and skills to help us, especially when we'll need it most. All right, well, you're, of course, welcome to stay as long as you want, and no one will look twice if you are done. So our next item is the open session for public comment. And so this is an opportunity for anyone to share something that is not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, we just ask you to wait until we get to that item. But open it up for anyone to come up and make a comment. And if you come up, please state your name, where you're from, and share your thoughts with us.
Thank you. Name is Kevin Unbadat from 62 North, 850 East.
James Endicott. Two houses over.
Thanks for coming. So we're here representing a street of 10 homes on 850 East, which you can see there. And there's one sign on there across from the newly, or being constructed, temple, which currently calls out as 850 East. And so we are proposing or asking that we additionally add to that sign Temple Lane. And so we'd like to simply add that on. We'd like to actually do it in a way where it stands out quite well. I think it's something to be proud of as a community and as a neighborhood. And so we've kind of gone around the city, not everywhere, but we've found a number of different ways in which the city represents its signs and where it will put in a name and a number for things. Sometimes the number's below, sometimes the number's on the side, sometimes the number's on top. So we would suggest and would like, as a neighborhood, that we had the spelling of Temple Lane on top and the numbers on the bottom. We'd also suggest, and we couldn't find one in Linden in the timeframe that we had, but in Orem, you can see on the bottom right there, they have actually created some signs which provide for easier reading of both the top line and the second line, especially the second line gets kind of small whenever you only have that typical size of the height. And so that's an example in Orem, just across the street from Linden, where they were, you know, probably added about three inches or so to the top sign. So we would suggest the blue ribbon, which is a taller sign there. There's only one to do, so I wouldn't think expense is an issue. If it is, come talk to our street. And then if that's for some reason not available, then we've got a second place. But Linden's a first-place city, and so I think we'll probably go with that. And that's our proposal. So we're here for any questions that you might have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Any questions or comments from the council?
You said you were representing 10 houses' worth of residents. How many of them have you talked with?
So we have talked with actually nine of them, and we have eight signatures. There's still two that we haven't acquired. We probably would be able to, if it's necessary. But we went through and proposed it exactly with these slides. And like I say, the eight of the 10, one we still couldn't get a hold of, and the other one's still kind of thinking about it. I don't think they'll probably be against it, but they don't, they're not the type of resident that seems to like to sign things, so that's where you're at.
Fair.
Remind me what we did on the Temple View Lane, was it?
So on that, I think Google's actually updated it since we put those signs on. We installed new signs and put, I think it's just below the wording there, so it says Temple View Drive.
There was a mistake on that. The individual reporting here to the council did not actually reach out to the residents appropriately. There were residents that gave feedback, but he had given the wrong phone number, so none of that feedback was considered. But this was what these two gentlemen are proposing, was what the residents actually on 900 East wanted as well.
The bigger word?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
Certainly, there's a formal process.
Yeah, so as an open session, we can't make a motion or anything on this. This is a pretty minor expense. And so, but still, if you're changing a street name or adding a street name, we should probably do that by a formal action. So with a general head nod consensus, yeah, okay, we'll bring that back for an official item in an upcoming meeting, so.
And hopefully these...
We're going to have that on the agenda, and you can be here that night.
Yeah, if you guys could just write me down a good email contact for you guys, and we'll let you know when that meeting's scheduled for.
And when you come, you could come up with a, "We're the Unbadat Endicott," you know, just kidding, never mind.
And maybe between now and then, if those last two people could, we could get some input from them, the ones you haven't gotten signatures for.
That's great. It's Kevin and James, right? Thank you so much. Really appreciate you and the work you did. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for putting the presentation together.
Anyone else that would like to come up? All right. And we'll go ahead and move on with council reports, and we'll start over on this side with Steve.
I just want to remind everybody that this coming Monday is our Memorial Day program at the cemetery at 9:00. Youth Council will be there to help with the arrangements and offering food that is being donated by Walmart. And it's a really great program, so we just invite everybody to be there for that. A lot of good work is put into that, and it's always just a wonderful event, so just wanted to put that in.
Awesome. Thanks.
Appreciation to all the council members who were able to be at the Police Awards Bank. Always good to rub shoulders with everyone and appreciate the chief, the great program they put on. Touch base with the chief. Really not a lot of big updates, with the exception of, for the new council members, we have a Memorial Day program at the Linden Cemetery every Memorial Day, 9:00 a.m., put on by the police department. Anyone who can make it, that would be great. And I think the mayor's involved. Mayor, conduct? No? Okay, well, anyone who can be there, that'd be great. So in addition to that, we received an email from Heath on those Linden Day Centennial sponsorships. Did everyone receive that?
Yeah.
Heath, thanks for sending that over. You know, as far as that's concerned, how would you like us to handle that? Maybe we just, I don't know if there's, you know, as I looked over that list, there's three or four, five names that I saw that I know really well. Maybe I reply all to the email and say, "Hey, I know these five. I'm going to go reach out to them," type of thing. And we have an ongoing... Would that be inappropriate in an email, Adam?
I don't think so.
Amongst council members? Okay. Well, maybe that's our current way we take a look at that. And that's all I got.
Awesome. Thanks. For the tree board, we're at 733 trees of our 1,000 goal. It's kind of a peak time to plant trees, so we were hoping for a bit of a surge. So any, if there are any ideas to bring them to me or to Heath directly about how we can increase and encourage residents to plant trees or tree-like shrubs to help us reach our goal. The June 5th is the next centennial event at Friar Park, 1 to 3, big kickoff. The communities that care, they're just finishing their grant cycle and have applied for a new grant. Fingers crossed that comes through. They've done a really amazing work. And the Historic Commission, they're testing the app for the scavenger hunt. It's really neat what they've got going on. It'll be really a great offering for the community. And updating the museum, and they're starting a project for oral histories, so a lot of great stuff. That's all I have.
Again, I was going to comment on the police recognition dinner. Again, just always want to express my support for our police, for the great work that they do, our first line of defense. And a wonderful event to recognize the police officers that serve us so well here. Also, on May 15th, attended the engineering meeting with the mayor and Adam, where we discuss all of the projects going on in the city. And for those people that live in the city, know there are a lot of projects going on, and they're moving along, and we're pleased with that, and we will be more pleased when they're all finished. And we appreciate everybody's patience during this process as we try to improve our city's infrastructure.
Ben makes a comment about there's a lot of projects going on. It seems like every organization within the city has just, always has a lot going on. I attend Parks and Rec meetings when I can, and it just, there's just so many moving parts. Soccer season is in history books, baseball starts in two weeks. The pool held their orientation for 177 lifeguards and concession staff. That's a big workforce that Harley and Alan Heath integrate with just for the pool season. The liner repair has been done on the lap pool. There still are liner repairs. I know we've budgeted for that in the past. There's going to come stuff in the future. More pools need those liners repaired, replaced. As of right now, all pools are up and running. They're all gearing up for Memorial Day weekend opening, which actually starts on... which actually starts on Saturday. So Saturday, eleven AM, is when our pool is going to be open. So I'm like, I'm looking forward to that. I've never, I'm embarrassed, but I've never been to our pool. I'll be there in the crowds, learning and understanding. I know, my kids were gone, Jake, my kids were gone when, when the pool came into being.
We live at the pool in the summer.
Well, I, I look forward to seeing you there, Jake.
That'll be fun.
One of the things that Heath mentioned to me today is we have only two reservation dates left for those private party openings. And that was actually, we've been in that same state for about two weeks. So they were all booked up even a couple of weeks ago, or almost all booked up even a couple of weeks ago. And if they go that fast, I think we need to ask ourselves the question, is our price point the right amount? We hate raising prices on anything. We, the, the pool is a facility that runs in the red every year. This is not something that goes to residents' tickets, right? Those private parties tend to be businesses, some inside of Linden, but many outside of Linden as well. And so maybe to help us with our pool bottom line, we might want to raise those private party rates. Our budget is already almost complete, so Heath, rather than trying to run numbers for, right now, for this budget approval, would recommend we do it in an amendment. But I want to give you a heads up, let you think about it, let you noodle it, you know, talk to whomever you want to talk to, so that we can look at that in the future.
Are you saying raise the rates on the already existing reservations, though?
No, 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 we can't do that.
You're saying next, so next season?
Next season, down the road.
I think that this is a conversation Heath's had with us many times on the council, and I just think we've raised, how many times have we raised it? It seems like we raise it quite often, and I think we continue to test the market, because those businesses, I'm just shocked what people are willing to pay. I got put in part, in charge of the bank's client, you know, associate appreciation party, and I was shocked at the amount of money that we were willing to pay for things. And I think that, that is a, a great way to help the pool try to become break even and, and so I'm all for it.
Without incurring it to the, to the residents, being able to still help us with that bottom line, it would be a great thing. Something to think about, we can address down the road. Planning Commission, we have our new employee. This is to fill Mary's position, Britten Corbett. I think he started a few days, well, I guess it was about a week ago, wasn't it? Yeah, so he's Associate Planner. Glad to have him here, he will be here in a couple of weeks. We can meet him in our, in our next city council meeting, is that right, Mike? Yeah, so we should get a chance to meet him. I did attend the, the Planning Commission meeting this week, and nothing really from the North Point Solid Waste.
Thank you so much. All right, Adam, turn the time over to you for your report.
Yeah, just FYI on newsletter, Steve, we've got you down. And at the end of this month, last week of this month. Okay, that'd be great, if you can get that to Brittany.
Okay.
And then, just FYI, the mayor is still working to finalize the grand marshals. She's talked to a couple of those former mayors, but still trying to get in contact with two others. So that's still TBD. And then, that is all I have. We've already talked about the other things, so, thank you.
Awesome. Okay. So onto the approval of the minutes, there were two meetings worth of minutes. So we'll start, we'll do one motion for both, but we'll ask for questions and comments first for the May sixth meeting. Are there any corrections or comments that you want to add to that set of minutes?
I have no corrections.
Okay, May tenth, any comments or corrections? Cool, and I'd entertain.
I'd make a motion to approve the city council meeting, city council minutes for May sixth, twenty twenty-four, and May tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Great, we have a first by Van.
My second.
Second by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, carries unanimously. We have three items in the consent agenda, a proclamation for building safety month in Linden, the Utah retirement system that we've been talking about, the resolution, and then a resolution about surplus property disposal. Are there any questions about those items?
We do have our, our chief building official here, Bryce McConkey. I don't know, Bryce, if you wanted to say anything, you're just giving, to give us a salute.
First, I want to say it's, it's great to be here in Linden. It's a great city, fantastic people. Shout out to Adam and Mike and others who just brought in some great employees here. It's a joy to be here, I've worked for some, this is the fourth city I've worked for.
Oh, nice.
I tell my wife, I've died and gone to heaven, this is just a great place to be, so I really appreciate that. I, I came out of the private industry about seventeen and a half years ago, almost, into the public, partially because of the challenges that I saw in the construction industry. A lot of the shortfalls, things getting missed, people didn't care. I was one of the guys that people would hire to come in and fix things. And so just, safety is, is big to me, you know? The, the end user is always often the one that suffers from, you know, our human frailties, if you will. So anyway, May is, is the safety month. Hopefully next year we'll have a little bit more, our public outreach and involvement. This year, just didn't quite have time to organize anything, but, but the intent is, is for some awareness and to just improve the level of safety. We just went through a bit of an audit, of course, that we, we get an ISO score that goes to all the insurance underwriters, and it affects the insurance premiums for all the buildings built between now and, and next time we do the audit. Anything we can do to help lower the risk and save lives and people and property, I think, is fantastic, so, anyway.
That's awesome, thank you so much, Bryce, really appreciate it.
Thanks, Bryce.
Any other comments?
You have all those other two items?
I don't, I don't think so, I've reviewed them. Mayor Protem, I'm comfortable moving to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
We have a first and a second, first by Jake, second by Van, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. That carries unanimously. Then we'll move on to item number eight, it's a review and action item, development agreement extension, and Adam will be presenting on that.
Yeah, I'd like to invite Clark Taylor, if, are you okay to come up and sit in front there, Clark? In case they have any questions. Hopefully this is pretty straightforward. Clark's with Shadow Mountain Industrial Properties and has worked with us a couple of times before. When the Ivory Homes development was constructed, they needed some utilities to run through there, and the city was also jointly part of the effort to get some utilities there so that we could build that newer sewer lift station. And so we worked with, with Clark and his, his team at Shadow Mountain, and, and they entered into a development agreement that allowed us to put those utilities through there. So as part of that, some plans were drawn up to construct the roadway, and I had a timeframe that the plans were valid for a certain date before they would expire. And we've done, now this is our, our third amendment to extend this out a couple more years, as we've talked with our engineering team. Nothing substantial has changed in our development policies or standards, and so they feel fine with allowing this extension to go another two years. So this would be, the road construction needs to commence on or before July first of twenty twenty-six. So there's copies there of the extension on the agreement, and then, I'm just gonna zoom this out to see, you can see here. There's just this smaller section of roadway that would connect. This is the south end of Anderson Farms Ivory Homes Development. Our sewer lift station sits right there. And so this section of roadway is what these road plans are dealing with, and would connect kind of over, there's the All American Gymnastics and I fifteen, just to try to get you guys oriented there, so. Any questions for me or Clark on that?
This, this is a third extension, are we okay with that? And do we see a fourth extension coming?
We're okay with the extension, whether there's a fourth, I'll leave that to Clark.
The property just hasn't developed, and so it's a bit premature to put the infrastructure in at this point in time, to file an infrastructure. We wouldn't have put the utilities in and done anything down there were it not to accommodate the, the city and Ivory Homes. So we made an accommodation upfront early, and we, we've tried to be good neighbors. I've been coming here to the meetings for thirty-five years. Schaefer Industries, we were the first down in the, in the park down there, and enjoyed working with you folks for many, many years. And the people you've had have been excellent. I've worked with Adam for a long time now, working with Bryce, and just great people. And I appreciate you starting the meeting with, with a prayer and with the recognition of deity and the recognition of government and, and citizenship. My boys go to these liberal schools, the ones you see in the news, and it is just absolutely nuts to see what's going on out there. And it's reassuring to be in this environment, to see the backbone of America. But pulling back to where we are, it's just a bit premature, but we, we did this to accommodate the city, we appreciate you reciprocating so that we can proceed in an orderly fashion as the, the property deserves.
Clark, Van and I have been on the council ten years, so I, I remember back when we originally first started talking this, and I agree that it's, you've, you've been a great neighbor and, and, and accommodation on your part, and we appreciate that, and I love these scenarios where we can come together and, and it's a win-win. And, and so I appreciate that, I remember discussing it, you know, probably eight years ago originally. And so, thank you for, for being a good neighbor.
You're welcome.
I'm ready to move, if that's okay. I'll make a motion that the develop, that we approve the development agreement extension with Shadow Mountain Industrial Properties as presented.
I have a first by Jake.
My second.
And a second by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Clark, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thanks, Clark, appreciate your help.
Thanks.
All right, now we have a park tax mini grants. Heath, are you gonna be presenting on that? Welcome you to come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We have in our park tax policy every year, of course, to provide park tax mini grants to associate to organizations that, that fulfill parks, arts, recreation, and culture to our city. So this year, with, I think it was with the passing of the park tax, we got a little bit more momentum and a few more applications on it, so. It was kind of nice to have that. So we've got those five applicants this year that you've got in your packet, and I wrote down in that packet just basically what they've, what they've asked for. We, the ask for the first time, I think in ten years, was more than our, our funding was available. And so you can see there on the summary that I, I looked over what their needs were and, and maybe areas in which that they might be able to trim a little bit, so everybody could have a little piece of that. Is there, so I would ask maybe if there's any questions about any of the organizations or what their asks might be.
Not about the organizations, but just will the amounts as recommended be sufficient for what they need? I mean, obviously, if they don't have any other funds, they'll have to pare back on what they're wanting to do, but.
The, the Pacem Choir had a ask for sixty-five hundred dollars to go after some rental, and they talked about Wadley Farms and Walker Farms as a possible place. So I don't know exactly what their rental fees are or their needs are for time. But we, I did talk with them and figured that we could, we could work that out. One thing that we didn't talk about in length that I think is maybe a possibility is use of our building, like some of the others are trading. But they're looking for special acoustics, which they put down in their application for sound. But it was certainly for Linden concert and a free concert for Linden individuals.
Thank you.
The Chantinet Choir is also a new one in there, and as you saw in there, they're looking for building trade so, so they can hold some of their socials. And they do concerts at the Spring Gardens and, and these other locations within the valley, but as well as the city to, to participate. So that was a new request as well.
I appreciate the variety of, you know, things they're, they're wanting to do with all of this, and I, I just think this is, would money well spent.
This is one of my favorite programs. We attended the Linden Elementary Arts Night where they put on some music. And every year I go there, my kids go there, and so every year they, it's the best marketing you could have. They just love, oh, this is brought to us by the Linden Park Tax, we love Linden City. And, and so I'm a big fan of this program and, and would even be in, you know, I would be open to looking at next year, maybe increasing that so we can accommodate some of those.
We certainly could. This was originally set at fifteen thousand in the very beginning, if you remember. So we didn't know what we were gonna drive in, in revenue, and we've exceeded our expectations in revenue. And for the Linden Elementary PTA, the, the instruments that they've bought and the instruments that they own, that the school would not provide, is significant. And between their xylophones and their ukuleles, and, and they keep all that stuff nice with stickers on it, and they have lots of other art things too.
Art park tax stickers, right?
Right, art park tax stickers. And one of the other things I really liked about that, and we'll have to talk with them about that, is their desire to, to put on some performing arts with theater and, and being able to buy and supply scripts and stuff like that for a different little avenue, so.
We still have time, before we, we have two weeks before we adopt that final budget. If there's a dollar amount you want us to add in there, twenty, twenty-five?
You know, as I look at it, I just remember that fifteen number, Van, you'll remember, this was probably eight years ago as well, my, my brain's really working double time this meeting. You know, and, and we, we put that out there as considering what we would, we were thinking we would bring in, and with inflation, the amount of sales tax revenue, I mean, I certainly would be open to that. This is one of my favorite parts of that park tax, and I think it helps us sell it every ten years. As you saw, it passed so well this last time, almost ten percent more than our original.
And the PTA was certainly on the charge on that helping us.
And I just think that this marketing, the goodwill, this is, this is what it's all about. I'd be open to that, I hate to get into the weeds too much.
Yeah, I agree, this is the first time the ask has exceeded the allocation, so. It would be, you know, if we need to go up to twenty or something.
That's what I was.
It's easy to monitor and adjust as.
It is.
It is.
What, do, do you have an idea why we had more ask this time? Can you attribute that to anything?
These other, the United Angels Foundation came last year, they, they applied last year and were awarded last year. The others, the other PTAs have asked in the past and have had some non-qualifying expenses as well. But this year, I, I believe the Chantinet's and the DePacem Choir, who are both kind of surrounded by Linden people, came from the, the, the vote on it to pass it again this year, just that it was out there in the open. So we do get a lot of asks that are, are non-qualifying expenses. One of the couple of things we put on there as a council, the council decided in the beginning was, has to have a, a major benefit for Linden, it has to be centralized in Linden. I know the care tax in, in Orem, they, they didn't do that, and they have the Utah Ballet, and all kinds of people apply there for money that doesn't really benefit some of the Linden residents and, or Orem residents. So I, I think that's it, I think that we just need to get more and more word out and, and more and more opportunities and groups.
As you came up with these numbers, was it more of, well, we've got this much budget, so let's try and distribute evenly, or was it, well, this is, fits better what we're trying to do with this, so let's allow this? What's your vetting process like?
I, I think that's both this year. I, I did look at a few things. Linden Elementary, for example, had an ask of three separate things, if you noticed that. And I thought that, you know, they could go without maybe the art boxes or something that they can help decide on. But at least the, the funding for, for the others was within their scope. Like if they had two hundred and fifty dollars or three hundred dollars for other expenses, you know, I, I thought we could, we could whittle that down a little bit. If we had twenty thousand dollars, we could fund the whole thing, but I just tried to keep that with, within.
And that was my follow-up, is if we do increase the amount, would it just be these who applied? Because that deadline's already passed.
It would, it would be until next funding year, which is in the spring.
I, I always supported the increase in the amount, and then to Steve's.
And then to Steve's, I had a similar question. And I, I was scrolling through the applications and I didn't know if this was an item on there. If we were confronted, this seems like it's an anomaly perhaps, but if we were confronted again with more asks than money. I've seen on other grant applications where they'll ask, you know, if you're not awarded the full amount, if, if they're still able to carry out the program. Just because it kind of changes the math for me a little bit. If they're like, if we don't get the full sixty-five, then we can't do it at all. Versus the other, it's like, no, we can make different amounts work. I don't know if that would help in our vetting as well.
I, I think that's an easy question to put on the application, just very easy if you weren't funded. It, it does say on the application that you may not be.
Yeah.
But the specification of, it's just going to kill you if you don't get the full amount would be a good question to help that.
Great.
I can put that on the application.
Awesome. Any other comments?
Would it be appropriate to amend the motion now to increase it to twenty thousand? Does that need to be done through a budget amendment as well?
For these current, you are certainly welcome to do that, and then we can bring that forward in two weeks.
With, with the final?
Yeah. And then, and then next fiscal year, yeah, I've made a note to change it to twenty instead of fifteen. So if you want to fully award all of these with their full request, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and something to keep in mind, we originally thought we would get around three hundred and fifty thousand. We are at nine hundred thousand on this. And so park tax is three, three times what the money that we thought we would get.
Heath, how do you feel about that?
Oh, I'd love to fund them all.
Me too.
Yeah, I really, I really would. I think they're all good causes and some of the, some of the, the trades that they're looking for are building rentals and some of the parks. And that's just a nice thing to put back into the Billy Rent Fund, but steer, that's really not cash out too much of the city. So I'd love to fund them all if we could.
I'd like to move, if I could, to approve the awarding of the park tax grants with the amendment of increasing the grant to the nineteen thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars that has been requested.
We have a first by Steve.
A second.
A second by Jake. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Is that something that has to come back then?
So we'll just move that with the budget amendment that we're doing and in two or three weeks, we'll just add that to it.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Heath. You're awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the business license fees study update for a public hearing. Mike will be doing that presentation.
Well, council members, thank you for letting us be here this evening and discuss business license fees again. And we've got Fred Philpot, who's with LRB. And so he's got a presentation ready. And we'd like to discuss then at the end, some of those proposals that we are bringing back to you, that we discussed about a little over a month ago.
Welcome back, Fred.
Thanks, good to be back. We can run through this pretty quickly there. I've made a whole lot of change to the presentation, other than the recommendations you had us look at. Again, we're looking at the business license fees and ensuring that we establish a fee that represents the cost related to providing those services. You can scroll down a couple, keep going, this is the statute relative to that. As a reminder, our process, we looked at a cost evaluation and a process evaluation and bringing those together to establish the fee. And then our methodology focuses on base costs, department overhead and administrative overhead costs to determine that cost element. And the next slide illustrates the process side. So we looked at all the steps involved and the personnel involved and allocated cost accordingly. The next slide illustrates the proposed, this is, we haven't made any changes to the preliminary draft that we presented relative to the fees, showing what you currently assess, and then the proposed for new business licenses as well as our renewal fee. So the renewal fee is the primary driver of cost recovery. Those are renewed each, each year. That, that is changing, so going from forty dollars for a home occupation. And commercially, you can see those are, those are changed as well. So eighty dollars and fifty-five cents for the renewal and then the proposed new application fees. So that, we didn't change that from the previous presentation. Those remain, remained the same. In addition, we look at disproportionate costs. We presented that information to you in the last work session that showed the maximum allowable disproportionate fee, based on our evaluation of police calls for service and establishing a baseline and looking at any business groupings that exceeded that baseline average. The next slide There we go. Highlights the additional considerations that we discussed previously as we looked at disproportionate fees. So we discussed businesses that generate maybe higher revenues based on higher taxable sales of property tax and some of the unintended consequences as a result of disproportionate fees. And so based on that discussion, you, you request that we reevaluate the disproportionate fee schedule and come back with a recommendation relative to what we think would be appropriate. And that is this schedule here. So we identified the, again, the disproportionate business groupings. And then looked at those that generated higher taxable sales and provided a larger reduction. And those that maybe didn't generate as much, we provided a reduction in that fee, but not as quite, the magnitude is maybe the, the larger generators there. In addition, we also looked at comparable communities, specifically Orem, relative to their maximum fees that they had established and tried to establish a fee structure that considered those comparable communities as well. So here we have your, your highest fee for big box retail greater than fifty thousand square feet capped at four thousand and a little change there. And all of the other fees reduced from, from that maximum there. So this would be a, a recommendation based on that fee structure with the new business fee schedule, the renewal application fee structure applied and the disproportionate fees applied. The new revenue generation or cost recovery is approximately a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and four thousand dollars. To put that into context, fiscal year twenty-three, Linden City collected seventy, about seventy-five thousand in business license fees for, for that period. So about a thirty-three percent increase above your twenty-three number. So that, that would be our recommendation for the proposed fees and disproportionate fees.
On that number, I did highlight also that the Linden Care Facility is out of business. So that does drop that about six thousand dollars on there. Of those, those businesses in that disproportionate category, we have about thirty-one. And so that's your fast food restaurants, your pawn shop, your trailer park, your big box. We did send them an email notice last week, giving them a link to the study, letting them know that their fees may go up. And so I did not receive any feedback from any of those thirty-one businesses. So wanted to give you that update. I tried to create a, another table here, just to show you, you know, where we're currently at with fees and, you know, what, what the renewal fees will be also, so you could see what we're currently charging some of those, those businesses as well.
Thank you so much. I guess this is a public hearing, so before we get too far, I would welcome a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Thanks. First by Van. Second by Jake. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Okay. Questions, counsel, comments?
Excited to hear what the public has to say.
So these are, these are quite a bit less than, than the original proposal that, as far as what's justified in this disproportionate analysis.
Disproportionate part, right?
Yeah. And so those percentages that, that Fred mentioned on that second to last page in his study where he highlighted. So, so this, the disproportionate fee is what we could justify through the study. And we're only taking, for instance, on the big box, three percent of that. And so pretty significant reductions in those.
What was the, what criteria were used to determine the adjustment percentage?
We, we looked at, again, the comparable communities, say, what was the maximum that were, were being assessed, these types of fees assessed in other communities? So that was our first trigger point. And then the distribution of that, we adjusted based on, again, revenue generation in other categories or taxation in other categories like sales tax and property tax. So those categories that generated more received a, a larger reduction to get us in those thresholds for comparable communities.
As, as, just a, a reminder, as part of our budget proposal this year, community development is looking at having one of our positions move from a, a part-time to a full-time position and that individual manages business licensing. And so this would help offset some of those costs, so.
Well, see no public comment. I'll motion to close our public hearing.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Further discussion?
I appreciate the thoughtful manner. You know, I feel like you, you heard us well and, and I really appreciated these as they came back. I think it keeps us competitive with our, you know, our neighbors. We never want a business to say, ah, I don't want to go to Linden because of that fee. And I, you know, looking at this, I feel, I feel like we're there. I, I think.
Yeah, it's the same thing. We talk about that, the care facility that goes out of business. And, and we don't ever want to be the part of the cause as to why somebody can't continue to operate. So always mindful of that.
Also appreciate, you know, keeping us in, in the same numbers that other cities have and, you know, helping to cover our costs. Many of them actually go down.
Yeah, for, for example, a bank goes down from three hundred dollars a year to, you know, eighty-one dollars a year on the renewal.
We don't want any competition. I'm just kidding.
I, I wondered about if this has played out in other municipalities with the disproportionate addition. So if, if the argument is you're consuming more police resources, so you're offsetting those costs. The chief said in our last conversation that right now the police are able to meet all of the incoming calls, it sounds like. I know if I pay for something, I have an expectation of, of getting it. I know Chief's not here, but I wonder what would happen in their, in the psychology of this if they, if there's competing calls and it's shoplifting versus like an emergency and they're like, hey, we're paying extra money. We should get, you know, prioritized in police response time because now we're paying on top of it. Have you seen that play out at all? It just seems like.
Yeah, and we spoke about that last time about the unintended consequence of response to calls for service. But I think another way to look at this is, is it's cost recovery. It's not for added, uh, uh, new, new service. It's to recover services that are, that are already provided to these businesses. So we're just recovering that cost. But entities should open this up a little more frequently to evaluate calls for service and, and adjust so that if changes are made or if trends fluctuate, that your fee structure would account for that. For example, if disproportionate fees have the beneficial effect of reducing call volumes as businesses implement measures to maybe control calls or, or change behavior, then the, the fee structure could adjust to account for that. And, and disproportionate fees could, could go away at, at some point if those calls change. But again, this is not, we're, we're not trying to incur a cost to change that level of service. We're just recovering for the service that's already provided there to those businesses on a disproportionate basis.
Their burden is being subsidized by somebody else's dollars is essentially what.
Yeah, I guess I just didn't know if it reached burden, if it was within our capacity. We're not displacing anyone. So it's like, we could handle that volume.
Yes, right now, yeah, going back to the chief's comments, you handle that call volume now. What this does is it shifts the, the burden of that cost to the disproportionate fee rather than it being borne by general, other general fund monies. So it, it allows you to shift that to the appropriate fee, free and then allow dollars within the general fund. It's not a whole lot of dollars, but it does shift that impact to the appropriate fee and frees up the dollars elsewhere.
Certainly a, a trade-off, though I think that's what you're getting to. And in my mind, there's that trade-off of, okay, they spent whatever, they had thirty-seven calls at this care center and for those seven hours of combined time, what could they have been doing otherwise? Could they have been, whatever, monitoring speeds or helping without crime prevention somewhere else? And, and so there is, there is a cost.
An opportunity cost, for sure. Okay, thanks for that. I guess the only other, one of the other questions I had was, thank you with the analysis of bringing, bringing to bear comparisons and then also what they bring in. Do you, I noticed like the mobile home park has a, a higher adjustment percentage and is the second highest compared to, you know, the big box stores that we have. Have we inadvertently charged more for a lower income section of town? I wonder if that burden is not commensurate with what they're capable of paying, if they'll feel it larger essentially because they're not bringing in as much money in just the current calculation.
Yeah, we, we did not, we did not consider affordability. Yeah, was one of our criteria.
Sorry, sorry.
Affordability, you know, often that kind of metric comes up when looking at fee assessments. But we didn't, I didn't look at anything like shad when considering this.
Is it an HOA? Like who pays, who cuts the check?
So it's owned by the Hanson's and.
Of the facility.
Yeah.
Right.
So that, so they operate it, they maintain.
Who very often are not low, low to moderate income folks, in my opinion. It, it's not the owners of the mobile homes that are paying it, it's the owner.
So they don't pay like a fee, it's not passed down to them?
It, it perhaps is, but, but the person paying it is the owner of the facility who traditionally are, are very wealthy. I've lent on a few in my time.
Sure.
Not that all are, but.
I guess I'd feel bad if they passed it on to their tenants, but maybe that comes with the comes with it. Any other questions?
Mobile homes are there at the mobile home park?
That's what I was just trying to remember. I think there's twenty or twenty-one. There's between nineteen and twenty-one, I think. I think two of them are currently, I know one of them's been closed by Linden City because of drug issues and health violations. And then I think another one, some guy just has, he bought it and that's his disaster. You know, that, in case there's a world disaster, that's where he's going. So, so two of them don't even have habitants there, inhabitants there.
There's one on the market right now that just popped on and I was shocked how much they're selling it because it doesn't come with the real estate. You rent the, the real estate and you, and it was over a hundred thousand. Shocked by that.
Yeah, because there's, there's a lot of improvement that needs to be made to that trailer park.
Her photo, like there's twenty-five.
Oh, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Nice, fast. With, with the home occupation licenses, I was looking at the limitation section of the report. And so we charge because people ask for them, is that right? Is that the caveat? Otherwise, we wouldn't be, as long as their services aren't exceeding what the residential purpose is. If they're below, if it's still primarily residential, they wouldn't need a business license unless they came in and asked for. If they're below, if it's still primarily residential, they wouldn't need a business license unless they came in and asked for it.
Yeah, the only time, so we only charge for a business license right now if they have employees or customers coming to the home. And so that's kind of been our, actually, it's only been customers coming to the home. That's kind of been how we've defined having that impact on the, on the neighborhood. And so that's the only time we've charged. We do, most people want a business license and so we have asked, you know, so then we've processed their home occupation and not charged them. That's probably something we need to look at as part of our policy now, whether we're going to still do that or not. It's been nice for tracking purposes to say how many we have, but it's not necessarily required.
Any other comments or questions?
I think I'm ready to rock and roll. I'll move to approve the new business license fees with the effective date of July 1st, 2024, as presented.
Jake has a first.
A second.
Lincoln with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's unanimous.
Hey, good to see you again. Fun to play with you down at ULCT. Good times.
All right, we're on to item number 11. A, or let's see, Juan or Adam, who will be covering this one? Well-designed.
I will run you through on this one. So I want to hear in case you have questions. So on this item, this is a bid award for an engineering services agreement we sent out, a request for proposals. And Hanson Allen Luce is the firm that our staff is recommending be selected for this. They've done, their team that has done these wells mentioned to us that they're close to 50 successful wells over the last few years. This agreement would put in place the design and then the construction, the engineering management for our new well number five. And so what's in front of you there is just this, this bid award that then would be signed by Mayor Protem if this is awarded tonight. To kind of put this in perspective, we're estimating the total cost of construction on this well is probably going to be in the three to 3.5 million range in addition to the dollars here that we're looking at. So we've narrowed this well down to two different locations that would be evaluated as part of their contract. One is in the northwest corner of Friar Park. And then the other would be the northwest corner of the future cemetery expansion. And there's some various issues with both of these spots. And so we'll be evaluating this with the engineers and then let you know as we get closer to this, which one is the preferred. They just barely today sent some information. Both of these would require, let me pull up here, some additional pipe piping. Did you want to say something?
Hello, good evening. Based on what we get out of this well, we're hoping to go for the 3,000 gallons a minute, but there's also the possibility that we only get about 2,000 gallons a minute. Drilling a well is, you don't always get what you're aiming for. So to go with the safe 2,000 gallons a minute, we will require this improvement here on Friar Park, installing about 600 feet, was it Adam, of pipe.
500 feet.
If we go to the next scenario, if we go with a 3,000 gallons a minute, then we will need additional 16 inch and 12 inch, but we don't want to make the, commit to what project of pipe we're going to install until we know how much the well is going to test and produce.
Will that be part of the cost of this element or is that going to be then after?
That is in addition, that is in addition to, to that.
But they would be fulfilling it?
They would be designing this and telling us and running numbers and cost estimates for us.
Yeah, so these numbers is based on the master plan that we just approved. We would put the, put the well there based on the production. Then we say, okay, we need this big of a pipe so we can get the water to our tanks and to the public in a, in a reliable and efficient, efficient way. Because if we try to put too much water through a small pipe, just trying to blow that through a, through a small straw or through a, through a bigger pipe, just with that kind of physics there.
So then site two again has, if it's only 2,000 gallons a minute, and this was really rough estimates is what.
Correct.
Literally, we got this today. So this is the engineers just saying, hey, just for your meeting, we just wanted to, you are not voting on which location tonight, so you're only voting on the contract. So if it's a 3,000 gallon per minute, then there's some additional piping on Main Street. And then there's an alternative where it's smaller diameter pipes, but a little more length, so. So these would be run in, as a dual pipe?
We can run it as a dual. Right now, we, we have an eight inch pipe in front of the cemetery. So that would be requiring to have a total capacity of a 12 inch. So what we can do there is just run a parallel so we're not disturbing or disrupting the current flow. Just make a parallel and then make a connection downstream through a hot tap, which is a simpler way of connecting the pipes. But we need, we need to end up with that bigger pipe to provide for the, for the tanks.
One of the challenges that we'll face during construction of the well, the drilling, is they run 24/7. And this takes up to 90 days, three months. And so putting up some sound walls and sound barriers in either location, but the park would be the one closest to some homes there, so.
Yeah, for constructibility, the easier side would be the cemetery because right now it's wide open and we have plenty of room to, to put, to put pipes and equipment and things. But for future maintenance, if we were to, to have to rebuild it and we have to get all the pipe out, then we don't have no room. Once we develop the cemetery, we're pretty much having to put all the pipe in a, in a truck or a trailer and haul it to a, to a different location. That's what we have to have on well number four by the horse arena. We have plenty of room. So what we did on that one is just put the pipe right to the side and we have all the room in the world. The cemetery does not require any retaining walls as far as the final, final construction, but we would have to put a wall around the future pump house that we can later use as a part of the cremation garden or features. The facility at the, at the park would require, because there is a difference in elevation, we'll need to probably cut the grade even with the parking lot, create some retaining walls and things. But then for serviceability, we would have the parking lot as an area where we can actually close out a section and be able to, to store the material. So there's pros and cons to, to both of them. In the scheme of things, as far as running the pipe, either, either project is, you know, with the, it's about a hundred thousand dollars difference in, in putting, putting the pipe that we need. Hundred thousand difference, right? So I'm looking at about $240,000 to run the, the section of pipe on the road with, depending on the sizes. Up to, so if we go with a smaller pipe, it's about 230,000. If we go with the 3,000 gallons a minute, we're looking at up to 775,000 on additional pipe, depending if we get the 2,000 gallons or 3,000 gallons. These are very preliminary numbers, but just to give us a little idea of what we're looking at. Also, this well, we're proposing of going deeper. So we have multiple aquifers that we can actually take from. Our current depth on the wells are about 500 feet deep. This well, we're thinking of going anywhere from 1,000 to 1,200 feet deep to be able to get to that, to those aquifers and not impact a different well. For example, well number five is very close to well number three, which is over there by the apple orchard, by Cheryl Tomlinson. That is at the 500 foot aquifer. When we go to the 1,000, they are not directly impacting each other. So we can potentially run both, both wells without interference.
Great.
So that's, but Hanson and Luce, like Adam said, they are very successful on developing wells, constructing wells in Utah County and that's why we're selecting them. And they also have all the internal knowledge of our master plans. So they know where pipe sizes need to be and how to construct the water system better.
Thank you.
The contract that up to 26 calendar months following the authorization, what's our goal for actually getting this done?
15 months is what I wanted to happen, but right now there is such a backlog on, on different parts. For example, the transformer, which is a large transformer, they're waiting up to, to a year to have them done. The sooner we get drilling, the better. The first phase is the permitting with the state and that always takes, takes a couple of months. And then after that, we'll of course have to go through the, through the site selection with our application. We can put both sites, but once we get kind of serious on that, then we have to, to zero in and.
And what's the process for the site selection? What happens?
It's up to you. We're, we're pretty much tapping into the same aquifer. So we're pretty confident that it's going to be very successful in either way. It's just that the residents, what do you feel the?
There's some political challenges to either spot, so.
Either way, we're going to be impacting the mayor's house big time.
He's fine, she's okay.
I think she's such a good listener.
Yeah.
The other benefit to site by the park is that when we go to pump, pump to waste is what it's called. The first few minutes that we start drawing the, the water out of the aquifer before we put it into the system, we have to, we call it pump to waste. So we pump the water and right now that the tension basin is in a very good location. So we can actually pump it to there. And if it's too much, then we can retain it into the pond and then release it slowly. On the other side, we are thinking that the pipe on the street will be sufficient, but we haven't run those, those figures that we might also have to perhaps have an upsize to that pipe.
Great. So then tonight specifically, we're looking at whether or not toward this contract.
Correct.
Okay, great.
But we're not picking the location yet. You're still.
Not yet. That's where we're going to still bring you some other proposals, what it's going to do on construction and then something to think about impacts to our residents in each location.
Great.
You started your presentation, Adam, you said we're going with Hanson, Allen and Luce. They've done over 50 successful wells. Immediately I thought, well, what happens when it's an unsuccessful well?
Chance.
For example, there is a, there is a well that they just did in Pleasant Grove Boulevard that they were hoping for 4,000, 5,000 gallons a minute. They only got roughly 2,000, 2,300 gallons a minute. So that became what is called a non-successful. It still got water, but not to the, to the bounds of the.
Interesting, but as we met with them, the cost to drill that, you don't know what your production is until it's done. And so whether it's a 2,000 gallon or a 3,000 gallon, we don't, we don't know until after it's drilled.
Is 2,000 considered successful in this one?
Yes. Right now, what we're hoping for this well is to be a redundant well to well number four. Are, we have four wells. Well number one produces about 350 gallons a minute. Well number two, about 150. Well three, 700 gallons a minute. And well four, we can vary anywhere from 1,000 to about 1,700 gallons a minute. If we lose well number four during the summer season, we are in deep trouble. We're going to have to be tapping from, from our neighbors to provide the water. So what's what we're trying to do with this well is create a redundant to, to well number four. And with additional installation of pipes that also show in the master plan, 10, 15 years down the road, it could also provide the additional water we need for future growth, but not completely eliminating the need for the future well on the west side. Now I'm telling you too much story, but it will delay the, the, the construction of well number six in the west fields by, by doing a well this big.
A question for you. I understand Central Utah Water does some studies to try to determine the capacity of the aquifer and aquifers. And do they do, does Hanson and that group, do they do any consultation with them? Do they reach out to see at some point, I mean, there's, nobody knows how much water's there, but do they, do they do any studies or consultation with Central Utah, I guess would be the.
Yes, so we recently, last, last year, we joined an organization called the NUCAC, the North Utah County Aquifer Council. And this is all the municipalities on the north, north of Provo. And Central Utah is one of, is one of those players. So what Hanson and Luce is the actual consultant for them as well. So what we're doing is we're actually monitoring the aquifer levels by every city reporting how much water they're pumping and what their drawdown is and where the levels are, how the levels are behaving in the aquifer. Central Utah purchased the, the water rights to Geneva Steel and I don't know if you've seen about four or five wells along Geneva Road. And, but those are 1,500, 2,000 feet deep. And that's where we're actually seeing that, that they're in a deeper aquifer and because they're lower, if you're thinking about it, when they pump, they should suck everybody dry, right? Because they're at a lower elevation. But that's where we can see the difference in the, in the aquifers and, and that's where, you know, Hanson and Luce has even a bigger insight of what the aquifers are doing and monitoring the health of those aquifers. In the future, after we get data of, you know, for another three, four, five years, that they're trying to implement the same things that we're kind of doing with the reservoirs. It's okay, you have so many water rights, you have so, so much need, we will start kind of limiting. If there is a drought year, it says, okay, you can only pull 60% of your capacity or start monitoring that. So to, to implement some water conservation and to let that aquifer recharge. There are also a few, one project that, well, Provo is doing their own, but then the NUCAC has a facility that we're actually going to start testing water injection when we have extra surface water, how to put it into the aquifer to replenish the aquifer. So that's all part of the studies that.
Is that the project Provo City is doing right now?
Provo City is doing one close to, right off the Provo River, where the old.
Freedom Boulevard.
Correct. That's what, that's where their aquifer recharge study. So everybody's, knows that water, we live in a desert and we have to monitor, so.
Wait, wait, wait. We're in a desert?
Yeah.
So, so it is possible. I appreciate you, you know, speaking frankly with us. We're not as educated as. Van's really smart about water, but I'm not. I shouldn't say we. So there's a chance that we can drill this and pull 1,000, right, just 1,000 instead of the 2,000 or 3,000 we're hoping for. What's the chance of zero? Does that happen?
We'll, we'll get, we'll get water for sure.
It's just a question of how much we can pull from it.
Exactly.
So well number, okay, there's a great picture that Adam has here.
So I, I wanted to show you, there's something that these, these engineers brought up in our preliminary kickoff meeting. Just to get you oriented, this is a 1938 air photo. And so it's skewed a little bit north, north is off on this side. So, so these lines are running north and south. So this is State Street and then 400 north. And then you would turn and come up 200 east. So the cemetery is right there. So this would be the northeast corner of the cemetery. That's site number two. That little white dot right there would be about where the one in the park is. So something they were hoping for is Battle Creek drainage. You can see this old alluvial fan. You can see how that fans out. And the surface water has been siphoned off from Battle Creek. And the surface water has been siphoned off from Battle Creek drainage. But there's still a recharge zone up in the mountains in that canyon. And so there's water that is seeping into the mountain through this area. And they were hoping, hey, get within that alluvial flan, fan of Battle Creek. And they feel like these two spots accomplish that, so.
Also, well, well, number three, which is the one there at the apple orchard, that when it was developed back in the, in the 60s, they actually tested it at about 3,000 gallons a minute. But the way it was developed, they didn't put a, a very good rock packing. So it started sanding, sanding up to the, to the point where with, what I understand with, with history is that the, the well started to collapse. That's why that wellhead or well house is so big. They have to put a big concrete slab and they're kind of limited to 700 gallons a minute. But that, that one tested at a 3,500 gallons a minute for a 24 hour period with very little drawdown. Our drawdown right now on 700, on well number three, it's about four feet. 700 gallons a minute only drops four feet on that. We feel, we feel good and the way they are now developing the wells and with the new technology of how to drill the wells and the rock pack that they do, they feel pretty confident that they will have a very successful.
How, how does their, how does their price compare to other firms?
There was a $5,000 price difference between Hanson and Luz and Odin Collins. Hanson and Luz being $5,000 more, but Odin and Collins has their experience more in Davis County. And, but with all their knowledge with the NUCAC and our master plan, we thought it was a better fit to, to award it to Hanson and Luz.
And does the amount that they proposed, was that within the range of what you all expected to see? Or it's kind of known that there wasn't a?
We, we put it out to six different consultants. Only three submitted quotes knowing what the, the experience we requested. There was only three, three firms that, that produced it. The, the other firm was about $100,000 more than, than Hanson and Luz.
Okay.
The first two were, were very close, that.
Great. Any other questions about the contract for $245,100?
I am all in favor of this, by the way.
This is, this is a critical need for Linden.
Yes. And, and again, as mentioned, there will be another well. And hopefully this delays that a while, but that will, that will come.
That's great. I, I mean, my reaction, I have no sense of how expensive this is. So that was why I was asking those questions. I was like, there are interns that get billed out at $76 an hour. I was like, geez, what am I doing with my life, you know? But all right, well then I would welcome a motion if there's no further questions.
I move to award Hanson, Alan and Luz with the Design and Engineering Services contract for a new culinary water well as presented.
First by Steve, second by Van, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. Right. Number 12, another bid. This is on the Center Street reconstruction.
Thanks Juan and Adam both on that.
Yes.
For that additional information. Appreciate that education.
Juan and his team worked with design consultants, prepared a set of plans and then bid this out. And do we take a break?
Let's just pause and take a quick recess so that we can have everyone here's, everyone's bright. So we'll do what, five minutes?
Five minutes.
Come back. Great.
I'm sorry, I disappointed you in my lack of pool.
You tell me a first here, we can ride this black truck together.
Alan and Harley took me through a behind the scenes tour of the whole facility. I, I geeked out on that. That was cool.
It's a pretty impressive pool. It's a busy one this year with PG's pool closed. I just think we'll have.
It's going to be interesting to see how it all plays out.
We'll have a lot of people wanting to go to the pool.
Well, they told me even in the past, come July, August, they're turning people away. We're just going to turn more people away this year.
Sorry, it's hot. That's what happens.
Ew, which one is that?
It's just a chocolate chip with butter cream. Like it should have been something else.
Yeah.
Well, I understand the, that comes from, you know, the family had water rights. Developers come in and start building and start district.
You did half of them.
Is there other half up there?
See, you just made everyone's day.
Let's provide it away.
All right, let's get back to it. No, thank you. I think we all needed that. All right. So Adam and Juan will be sharing details about the Center Street bid. Take it, take it away.
So Center Street Reconstruction Project, this is something we've looked at for several years. And this is a, a really good price. We were expecting this in the three to three and a half million range, came in at 2.28 million. So we're, we're glad of the lower price. We, we do know there's some, there's some potential for some soft spots in here where there may, may need to be some change orders for over excavation or, or changing of some things there. They're, they're trying a, a different methodology with kind of a concrete slurry underneath the road instead of a deeper road base. And so something that we've used in, in some other areas of town that's been effective. So bottom line, we think this is a good bid. The, the lowest two or three numbers were fairly close. And so we're recommending award on this to Kilgore Companies. And.
Fairly reputable Kilgore, right? Seems like I've seen them.
Yeah, Kilgore was bought by a bigger entity and they actually ended up buying asphalt, asphalt plants. So they, they really stepped up their game to be pretty good competitors with Geneva and Staker. Just to, to make sure we are, because we have that, that bigger of cushion and it takes a special process to treat the sub base with this slurry. We're probably going to hire out the consultant that is the pioneer in this road base treated concrete base to, to oversee the process. And we feel good.
I was just kidding. Is that incorporated or that would be in addition?
That'll be an additional, but we're looking at about $12,000 to have this consultant for, for the duration of the treatment of the, of the base. The, the price does include the roundabout, does not include the logo on the roundabout.
That's what I was going to ask about what it includes. Is this just the road?
Road.
Improvements along the side, the roundabout and everything else that's been talked about?
All the curb gutter, sidewalk on the south side, the north side is pretty much set. All the bobouts, the pork chops coming into the, the roundabout, the roundabout itself. But just with a.
Concrete stamped concrete. So we had a public open house and I know the mayor and I were there and I can't remember if anybody else was able to attend. But was any, were there any modifications made to this plan based on that? Or it was already in play, right?
Yeah, this is, this is very much in conformance with what we presented to the public.
And so it was, that was to just let them know what was happening. Okay.
So what's the difference between the alternative additive, alternate A and alternate B? So 21A, 21B or 22A and 22B? Is that the slurry you're talking about?
Right. So, so one of them is the, the one with the, we're going to mill the asphalt, haul that away. And then we reshape the road the way it's going to be, like if it was going to be paved. And then we come in with this concrete mixers, applying the slurry. And then we apply it to the, to the whole road. Then we bring a, like a tiller, like a pulverizer and mix that cement into about that deep on the, into the road base. And then we reshape it again and then we roll it. And then we let it cure for about three to seven days, depending on what the consultant requires. And then after that, we, we go ahead and, and paint.
Okay, thank you.
Alternate B was to do the entire excavation of the whole roadway to bring all brand new road base. But then you can see the, the difference in price was if you go to the bottom there, Adam. Alternate A versus alternate B, we're looking at about $320,000.
Yeah.
And then the logo was just, everybody was all over the place from 15,000 to 78,000 dollars. And none of them really have really good experience doing that logo. So we might have to, if we decide to go with the logo, once, once we do the concrete, one of the options is to come with a, pretty much draw the L on top of the, just kind of stencil it out and then we come and actually grind it out to create those indentations and then we do an epoxy paint to, to do the L. But very few people have that, that expertise. So we don't know if, which way, which way to go with that.
When would Lincoln logo, what's that?
I know what I'm hearing.
Could this begin?
We're hoping to, once we award it and get a list of middles, they're trying to start right after Memorial Day.
Oh, sweet.
The other positive with this group, they hope to be done with the majority of paving by the end of this year. So that was a huge plus.
Yeah, we're, we're talking phases that during the summer, when school is out, to finish, get out of the school zones, both on the junior high school, Rocky Mountain Elementary, the charter school and, and then kind of work our way, open that and then work from about 500 east to about 200 east and then finish the remainder. So we have that out of the way.
End of year, December, end of year? Or end of season?
The paving season ends, if we push it, probably end of October.
Okay.
House is still looking for summer next year?
Yeah, Mike relayed that on to their project manager a few times of, we, we really don't want the open house traffic and school traffic happening at the same time. So if they could have an open house the start of next summer, that would be awesome. For sure. They have not told us.
Great.
We're kind of reading in between the lines that hopefully they will have their open house after school is out for, for next years.
Yeah.
So, so we don't have both.
So thanks. Other questions?
To make a motion, I move to approve awarding Kilgore Companies the Center Street Reconstruction Project as presented.
First by Van.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. Okay, number 13. Thanks Juan. Appreciate you so much.
I'm dealing with, with this issue on one of my properties, so I'm going to recuse myself and step out.
Thanks Lincoln.
On 13?
Yeah. Yeah, the ADU.
I also have an ADU. Do I need to recuse myself?
All right. Mike, you'll be presenting for us.
Yes. So just wanted to do a, a quick review. In 2019, if you remember, we were required to adopt five moderate income housing goals. And then in 2022, they came back and said, now, now you have to do a implementation plan for each one of those goals and re-adopt your goals as, as part of your general plan. And so since 2022, we've been working on our implementation plan for these. So the first one I wanted, so let me go, let me just talk about our five goals quickly. So number one is create or allow for and reduce regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwelling units in residential zones. So that's, we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about number one here in just a few minutes. Number two was eliminate impact fees for any accessory dwelling unit that is not an internal accessory dwelling unit. So that's basically your detached ones. Last year, we removed impact fees, the parks, police and fire impact fees for detached accessory apartments. We approved one to two of those a year. And so that's, that's where we're at on that one. With that one also, in December, we put a social media post together letting people know about, you know, there's no impact fees, about how to build an accessory apartment. We also did a newsletter article in January. So we're, we're, we have to continually, one of the things with these that I guess I'm just going to get on my soapbox for a second is the state requires you every year to be implementing something. So even though we accomplish a goal, we still have to be implementing it every year. And so it's a little hard to, you know, I don't know. I don't, I don't think they understand the city's reasoning sometimes. Like, okay, you want us to accomplish a goal? We went and accomplished it. But then they still want us to working on that every year. So we still have, you know, we still have to keep implementing it. And so that's why we'll continue to do the, the newsletter and social media posts on these items. We eliminated the impact fee for that number two for detached accessory apartments. Number three, this is going to be in the next item. Number three is demonstrate utilization of a moderate income housing set aside from a community investment agency, reinvestment agency, redevelopment agency or community development or renewal agency to create or subsidize moderate income housing. We're going to be talking about that one in the item 14 tonight. As, and then number four, reduce, waive or eliminate impact fees related to moderate income housing. If you remember, last year, we also reduced fire, or we eliminated fire and police impact fees for moderate income housing. And then this year, you also reduced the water impact fee. And so we're going to be letting the state know about that as well. Let's see. We're, we're constantly tracking and benchmarking what we're doing with these so we can report to the state. And then number five, we'll be talking about in the next item. And then number five, we'll be talking about in the next item as well as, uh, implement zoning incentives for moderate income housing units. So those were the five, uh, goals that we adopted in 2022. So with, with number one, um, our implementation plan was, you know, to record how many ADUs we have. In 2022, we had 243. We now have, we now have 266. We've, we've gained, um, what, 15 in the last two years. Uh, I think two of those are detached accessory dwelling units. The other implementation plan was to help make, to, to help make sure that all the ADUs are safe and accounted for. Over the next two years, the city will evaluate how to implement a hold harmless or amnesty program for existing but not approved ADU owners. Uh, number three was perform a yearly review of the number of building permits issued and a yearly review of the ADU ordinance. And then promote yearly an ADU article through ci- city newsletter and social media accounts. So the, the one thing I wanted to talk about tonight was this, um, you know, how do we help those who do not have a permitted ADU in the city to become permitted? The state's now requiring us to, to report on how many ADUs we approve each year. And, and so that's something, how, how do we help those that, um, may have an illegal one that, to, to become legal? In the nineties, um, the city did an amnesty program where they just said, anybody that's got one, come in and tell us and you're good. And I think there was, um, I can't remember if I put that in your report. I think there was 20 or so, uh, let's see, oh, there was 18. 18 homeowners took advantage of that, uh, in the nineties. And so every, and one thing I forgot to mention is by August 1st of every year, we, I have to submit a report to the state outlining what we've done to accomplish this. So in the next, uh, couple of months, I'll be working on that report. So tonight, I wanted to just do a, go over a program that, um, I've really tried to research. I've looked at what a lot of other states are doing and seeing how they're trying to make or help homeowners to bring their ADUs into compliance so they're permitted. So what, what I'm trying to do is, is really look at kind of more of an educational process saying, um, you know, we'd promote this to the community, saying, you know, hey, if you have an unlicensed ADU, here's how you can help that become permitted. Uh, in the last year and even recently as of last week, we, we've had someone want to make their ADU, um, more, uh, to become permitted. And so, um, we're, we're starting to see residents just, uh, do this naturally. But, so what we would do is, um, with this program is, is educate our community on, here's a checklist of things to, for basic life safety issues in your unit. And so we, we've come up with a checklist, uh, that, you know, a self-assessment checklist that they'll go through. Here's some basic minimum requirements that we would like to see, such as, you know, is there exposed electrical wiring? Is, how is it heated? Is there carbon monoxide detector? Is there a smoke detector? Um, is there a way out of the sleeping unit? And how big is that? And, and so what, so they'll go through this internal checklist and then, um, they will submit a floor plan, this checklist, uh, to the city with, in a file for a building permit. Building inspector, um, will then, uh, go out and do an inspection and help them figure out what, um, if anything needs to be updated to the unit. Uh, some of these may not have enough parking. Our, our, our city ordinance and the state code requires one parking stall. And we say that has to be behind the front setback. In some cases, we may need to work with residents in figuring out that, that parking spot, uh, so that it's not, um, you know, causing an issue in the neighborhood, uh, those types of things. So there's, there's gonna be a little bit of, uh, working with residents on this. Let's see if there was anything else. We, we gave a, a list of frequently asked questions, um, to, you know, that residents can look over. And, and so, uh, the goal really of, of this is to try and create safe units, um, for tenants in Linden City and then to work up with homeowners to, to become permitted. So, uh, we can report these numbers to the state as part of our yearly report. So with that, I'd, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, I, I do. Uh, and thank you. I like this process and I like the idea of working together and obtaining. So one of them in here is, and it's, it's maybe listed twice, maybe I don't understand, on the, the door going to the exterior be the 36 inches. Okay, so if I'm trying to do this in my, I don't have a 3O door, I've got a 210 door that goes to the outside, what happens at that point?
Maybe I can have Bryce help me with that.
So the state construction code requires. There we go. State construction code requires, uh, at least one egress door is 36 inches wide from a dwelling. That applies to all dwellings, apartments, um, single family homes, townhomes.
Okay, I understand that. What happens when my door doesn't?
So speaking from a code perspective, then they would enlarge the, the door opening and to comply with the state construction code.
What if they don't want to do that? And so they just don't go through the process here as well?
So, that's a good question. From, uh, a legal answer from my perspective is that in order to have a dwelling, that it needs to comply with the state construction code, construction code and the intent, uh, the main intent is, is to not only get people out, but to be able to make a rescue. Similar to the windows in a bedroom, or an ingress and an egress both. And so whether you're getting out of there in a stretcher, uh, or you've got equipment going in to save someone, with the three foot wide. Now, the opening itself is gonna be about 32. That's the clear opening. The door slab itself is 36.
I mean, I understand all of that as a builder and get that. So I'm trying to decide what motivates me if I don't think my apartment, my accessory dwelling unit is going to meet it and it may become too burdensome. And so I'm just gonna keep doing it and not respond at all.
And it, and a similar, similar concern would be for sliding glass door. So, um, the, again, the egress door requirements of the state is a side hinged or pivoting type of door. Sliding glass doors, uh, can, can be potentially problematic for various reasons. I mean, can use your imagination. It, it comes down to what, what the state standard and the state code is, has set as the minimums.
Mike, it looks.
This is a question then for Mike. If we're trying to get people to come forward and to become more safe and we put something in there that becomes a deal breaker, uh, in changing the door.
To some of us, it's so easy, but for those that aren't involved in the construction process and knowledge, it can feel overwhelming.
Yeah, depending on where that door is and what has to be there, that can be a chunk of money that, yeah, I'll just keep doing what I've always been doing.
Yeah.
Can be the thought process that many will have.
I mean, we don't want somebody to go down this process and then withdraw, you know? Because now we know there's an illegal unit there.
Right, and that's my point.
That's something I, I think we need to still talk about. Um, you know, maybe we need to address that with Brian as well. I mean, it even comes into play if you don't have the right size window in a bedroom. How, how does, how does someone get out of that bedroom then in case of a fire? You know, and, and the state can, says that cities can enforce that, uh, unless it causes some structural issue with the, with, with the home.
Or if it was above, if, if the window was approved in a bedroom prior to that.
Yeah.
Opening requirements, then it's, as they say, grandfathered in, but because it was approved at the time.
No, you bring up a good point that, you know, but, you know, it's even like now if someone were to submit a, for, like, two, those two people this year that have submitted for a building permit, then they found out, oh, I don't wanna do that. What do we do, what do we do now? You know, and so that's something we, we still need to, to work out.
Yeah, that would be my thought process that, and again, I'm gonna just think of it as me and I do have an accessory approved. Uh, I'll throw that out just too. But I get lots of people that talk to me and ask questions about it when they don't think that there's will. Is how, what's the process of becoming that way? Hey, I tried to be a good citizen. I tried to come forward and now they're gonna shut me down and I need that income that I've been, I, I don't know if I know a good answer to this point and still provide the safety, but they're, they're not providing now anyway.
It's interesting because it becomes a debate from a philosophical standpoint of, are we, do we feel better about knowing about it even though it doesn't fit code? Or do we feel better just sticking our heads in the sand and never knowing about it? You know what I mean? And that's a tough.
So now are you allowing it because you know about it?
And, and one, one of the other advantages of going through this too is nine, you know, emergency services, 911, we haven't registered that address. And so, you know, that's something we do with all ADUs is we're, we're updating the 911 system where that address is and where that, you know, that there is a tenant, uh, or another unit in that basement or.
And I understand all of that reason and I'm in favor of it. Don't, don't get me wrong. But I'm trying to figure out, okay, this is probably gonna become too hard. And I don't think mine is gonna ever work without being a significant expense. So I'm just not going to.
Well, and how, how effective is an amnesty program that, that doesn't allow for amnesty? And so are we checking a box so that the state is again happy with us on a moderate income standpoint? Or are we really trying to make change?
This isn't amnesty. This is trying to get them to become legal.
I think Mike's, uh, comment and his approach about, um, education, uh, will make a huge difference. I, I think, uh, knowing that there's such a wide variety of perspectives and attitudes on this, I, I don't know that we'll ever catch every, uh, I shouldn't use the word catch. I don't know that we will capture, encompass whatever, you know, all of the, all, all the, the ADUs that exist without approval. But I think, uh, you know, on the one perspective, we're trying to, to provide the minimum level of safety that, that the state has set, of course. At the other, other side, how do we motivate, as you're saying, how do we, uh, provide that motivation or help that motive, facilitate that motivation to, to be able to account for the ADUs in the city and bring them into compliance?
This will bring in new people for sure. That'll be some, but it won't bring all. And maybe it's another step later. I don't, I don't know.
But at least some people will also know upfront with this checklist saying, okay, this is what's expected of me and.
Yeah. So this part is not a hold harmless or amnesty part. This is education.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, part of the process, you, you would agree to the parts that can't be inspected, a little bit of a hold harmless, if I understand that correctly. I've covered up some work in my home that can't be inspected.
Yeah, I did see that.
And so there's, there's a little bit of that that would be.
You'd be responsible, like you notarize and sign saying, we couldn't check it.
And what would be the process of, uh, educating, informing?
Yeah.
The citizens of Linden.
I, I, I mean, there's a couple of things we've talked about, you know, of course, social media and the newsletter. We, we've also talked about just doing a, a mailer to all the residents, just a, uh, you know, what do you, what do we call it? Postcard, yeah, thank you. A, a postcard and trying, you know, trying to get the word out.
I've been curious, Bryce, is there any, any allowance in the building code for you to say, wow, they, they are close. They meet 10 out of the 12 objectives. The other two are just astronomical. Is there anything that allows you that flexibility within the building code?
To a degree, uh, yeah. So, so the code purposefully ha- leaves some things up to interpretation. I have certifications and I have a state license and of course, I don't wanna lose those. I'm obligated, you know, I have, uh, an agreement, if you will. Um, at the same time, um, life safety items, I, I typically don't budget a lot on because of the, the potential state significance there. Um, however, uh, we do, uh, make adjustments. The, the two that I inspected recently, um, I, I don't go in and, I've heard of some cities, they go in and just, you know, take all the sheetrock off. In fact, I wrote an article, there's one in California, take everything off, we won't even go in there. Um, I, I don't believe in that approach. Uh, my philosophy is, you know, if, if something's out of compliance and a concern, I say something. If I see something and I don't say something, then legally I can take some of that liability upon myself, um, which also transfers to the city as well. And that's, of course, part of the concern. One of the concerns with an amnesty program is, um, and we've had this discussion in other cities as well, is what would be the legal implications, you know, the culpability of the city if we just accept the non-compliances? And the decision was, is it's not in the city's best interest. And so, um, it's challenging. We, we wanna provide the minimum level of safety. Um, at the same time, find a way to motivate, um, to bring them into compliance, but also be able to account, account for those. Um, there is, there is some flexibility that we already do exercise.
How much, um, education, like, okay, so it's in a foundation wall, you would need to, this is what you would need to do. You would need to cut the, the opening. Why, did you provide any type of a possibility of solutions to help the homeowner at that point and how to get there? So that it's not overwhelming to somebody that, if you will, has no idea how to make.
Yeah, we, I, I haven't come across any problems in Linden. I mean, I've been in the industry for 30 years and have had, you know, thousands and thousands of, of discussions. Some are, are easier than others, but, um, and some people have a better ability to comprehend, even from discussion, of course, is to, you know, even what we see is a simple solution, they just, it's just overwhelming to them. But, um, but we're, I'm solutions oriented. And we have the discussions, um, you know, whatever it is. Some, there's some things I make recommendations on. I, I don't feel like that the, the cost and the trouble is worth, um, the full compliance. Um, but the general compliance is met. There's no, uh, safety concerns, uh, if you will. So, uh, there's certainly some room. But yeah, we have the, the discussions. So I don't have any examples for here, for Linden.
Maybe the two that you did inspect, you remember if they, what?
Yeah, so, um, access to electrical panels. Uh, sometimes there's things are, are too close and so it's either, you know, is there some adjustments made? That's a, an electrocution hazard. Working right here, when you only have this much room, you drop something in there, a screwdriver or, you know, whatever it might be. If there's an arc flash, we want a little bit of room there. So it's just not right up in your face. We only had that on one. It was an easy solution. They moved, uh, water softener. So, pretty easy. Outlet spacing. Most people, I think, know that your outlets have to be spaced a certain, uh, or not be too far apart, whether it's in your kitchen and so forth. Sometimes you'll see an outlet, one outlet for a long, you know, kitchen counter space. The trouble of, of them pulling off the tile and adding the other required one is, is, uh, so, in my opinion, sometimes it's a little bit too costly and, and intrusive, intrusive than what we're trying to solve. And so if it's reasonable, then we just go with it. I, I don't, I don't really remember the other ones. Oh, carbon monoxide detectors. I don't budge on that. They need to have one, but that's a.
Easy. Yeah, that's an easy thing because there's no hard wiring required on that.
Same thing on, uh, uh, smoke detectors in the bedrooms. That's a, you know, there's no budge on that. But there's a lot of solutions. The industry provides wireless. Uh, I have allowed the wireless because they can communicate. You put a wireless that's hardwired with everything else here. You do a retrofit wireless here. They communicate this at the whole house, you know, alarm on. You know, a hundred dollars later, everything works. So there's a lot of things that, that people can do to, to achieve that minimum life safety. The door is probably one of the
Door and window.
Potentially, door and. The door is probably one of the potentially, door and window, some of the most costly.
Ceiling height.
But I ask myself, what's a life worth? And uh, if I've, if my gut says there could be a problem, I typically go with that.
With, with this, I, more of just a, probably a comment than a question because this isn't an area of my familiarity or expertise. There are just words that I didn't know. I mean, you've educated me some, but I thought maybe an average resident, words like setbacks. And even site plan, is that like a drawing or? And so I just thought there might be some massaging of the language to have it be as widely accessible as possible to the residents.
Can I show an example of a?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Make it super simple.
Can that be like a hand drawn?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, something like that.
Mike's a good artist.
Example to put, this is what we're looking for.
We've, we've got a new planner that's good at drawing stuff in design and other good software programs, so. Yeah, that, that's great. And this, I think this will continue to evolve and we'll, we'll, you know, there's, we'll make it easier for people to understand and so.
I think most people too, and they understand the level of liability. Um, they can weigh out in their minds what's, you know, what they're willing to do.
Yeah, totally.
I think most people want to be in compliance. They're just worried that they're not and don't, and, and don't want to lose that income. Right, and so it's, I'll just keep doing what I've been doing.
Yeah.
And like I said, I get asked these questions multiple times on where there's a concern that I don't think I can become compliant and.
There's some, there's some fear sometimes that cities will come in and say that, you know, you have to destroy all this or pull all that off or whatever. Um, I don't take that approach unless I see something very significant.
There's a note on here that says this is not an exhaustive list. Um, and I, and I understand the reason for that, but a- again, I'm, you, you've got my mindset here on what I'm trying to get people to do. All of a sudden I think, okay, what else could I be?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good.
Checked on that I, so also when it's an unknown, I'm more concerned.
We can call it a, a general, a general list. Um, having worked with so many different personalities, of course, some people, if it's not on the list, then they just wanna argue. And I, I don't, you know, I'm a people person. I love to help people feel good about what they do, do well what they do. Um, if I can kinda nip the arguments right up front so they at least understand and they know what's being expected, including there may be something else, you know, an outlier, some unique problem. For example, uh, um, maybe they, they didn't pour very good stairs coming out of their basement walkout, you know? And it's not safe. They only gave you four inches. Hey, I'm not gonna put all those things on the list, of course, because it'd be overwhelming, but they can understand that there may be some random things, but you're right. We don't wanna make them afraid that there's gonna be a.
You know, so my, my mind, sorry, I just have to do it. Different things go through my mind on different aspects of this. So when we go back to the smoke detectors, carbon monoxide side detectors, that haven't always been in the code for homes that are really, really old, especially the carbon monoxide part. So there's homes that are already grandfathered, to use that term, and were permitted, which is a, something to just think about. The other part of it is, if you're doing this, here are some products that do meet code and this is what you would expect to pay. Kind of providing some of those solutions where I'm looking at this list that I'm trying to say, okay, yeah, I can get that. I can get this. Yeah, I think I can make this happen. And that, without coming in and talking, finding out that it's impossible.
Yeah. Linden has very, very few homes that don't have or wouldn't have smoke detectors or carbon. Well, carbon monoxide detectors have been in for thirty years, I think, ish, maybe longer, but.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of homes before that.
Smoke detectors have been in the, the code for a much longer. Creating a new dwelling inside of a dwelling, which is the ADU, um, is creating a new, that's a new dwelling. And so by s- by s- I've kind of taken this, the approach that, um, when you create the new dwelling, then uh, then the state construction code applies and there's, again, that minimum level of safety and access. I, I really haven't, even in the other cities I've worked at, I really haven't had too many issues with retrofitting or that kinda thing, existing conditions.
I like that idea though, Van, moving forward, a- as we work on this, as it grows, that, that we provide them with information of, and, and it won't be accurate and exact, but hey, you can expect to pay around this to, to put in a new smoking, you know, smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector. You know, and, and even as far as, hey, if you gotta retrofit a door, it's probably eight thousand dollars or, or whatever it is, you know what I mean? Just so that people can understand it. And I think our goal with this is to have more people do legal ADUs. And if that's the case, information and more information and more information is the key. So, I like that moving forward. I'm comfortable with where we're at right now.
Could I read one thing from Brian? It's nice having someone watch on YouTube. He just said, I've been listening to the council discussion on ADUs. The only thing I can think of is maybe we come up with some type of incentive programs where we give them breaks on some fees or maybe set up a fund to give it, to give assist in addressing the health, life and safety issues because we have to balance the policy interest of helping maintain their monthly income that helps them make the mortgage payment instead of, I g- sorry, mortgage payment against the life safety issue of the tenant that burns to death when they can't get out of the fire. I think it's also really important to stress of those people who know they're not compliant. Their homeowner's insurance policy will not cover those damages. And if they lose a tenant in a serious accident, they are ruined. They lose everything, their house won't be, they lose everything and their house won't be rebuilt. There's really serious consequences.
Y- yeah, like for me, some of the rationale that you'd listed, I mean, those are great, but I, I do think some of these other things. I'm, I was talking to some residents about this and just letting them know and you've put it here, but mo- most pointedly, they're like, oh, we're really concerned about density. I'm like, well then help us know if what ADUs are available because that helps signal to the state that we've, are doing more than maybe is the benchmark. So I just don't know if, how, I know we don't wanna overpromise anything so they think, oh, then if we do this, then we get this. But really pointed language like that, I mean, that's convincing to me, more convincing to me.
There's things too. I think, you know, maybe we could explore at a future meeting where, you know, you're, you're using some of your moderate income housing funds to maybe assist people. Or, you know, or where you have some RDA funds.
Have a grant.
Yes, a grant program, that'd be great.
What will be the billing permit fee for this?
It looked like it was five hundred.
We've, we've taken a, an approach, looking at it from a legal perspective and, and also from the perspective of, of trying not to encourage people to uh, continue to do something they know they shouldn't and then come back and get a benefit for that. Um, if there was a permit that was pulled for the original basement, uh, finished, then, then there would be just a processing fee. Um, I'd go do one inspection.
I, I think it was, weren't the others right around three hundred dollars or something?
Something like that. If a, if the basement was finished without a permit, then we charge them the full cost of the permit. Um, I go do, I, it, uh, an inspection. I'm just looking for anything, anyone's gonna die, get electrocuted, you know, injured.
Yeah, so what is that fee, would you guess?
Um, so.
Well, you can adopt, hopefully adopt one to.
Yeah, I was like, I was looking at the next item.
It's based on the valuation. We'll talk about that later too, which is based on, you know, square footage, cost and so forth. So it can be anywhere from three hundred, two thousand dollars, depending on the size of the home. Uh, most of your ADUs are gonna be uh for the, the basement areas between five hundred and eight hundred for a basement finish permit. And then in that case, I don't know that we charge, we haven't been charging an additional fee for the ADU, so it's just been absorbed in that. Basement finish permit. That way we get the basement finish permit on record. It's public record. Anyone can search and see that they got a permit on the finished basement. That's the approach that, that I've taken and done in other cities as well.
I would bet that we have more illegal ADUs than we have legal.
Absolutely.
By a long shot. How often are we getting reports from neighbors saying, hey, my neighbor has an illegal ADU? Very rarely.
I, I think the five years I've been here, I've probably had two or three.
And then those two or three.
And it's mostly that they're, the homeowner no longer lives there, so they're renting the upstairs and downstairs.
And what's been our approach at that point?
Uh, just send them a notice saying, hey, you've, you know, you have, the owner has to live there and you have an AD, illegal ADU come in and talk to us.
That's one of the challenges with the ADUs.
That may be something I would like to address at a future meeting. I mean, not just, not that it's owner occupied, but what do we want to, what's the owner doing and what does it matter if he's there or not? I, I mean, if it's parking on the street, if it's noise, if it, whatever it is, those are the things that we would, in my mind, we would be concerned with. Not necessarily that the homeowner actually lived there. And there's benefits, you know, we're getting there. Don't, don't get me wrong. But maybe I want to buy that house, put two people in it and I live three doors down and I'm essentially an owner occupied.
Yeah, on a state level, one of the justifications for, um, for the state recognizing and allowing the ADUs and not requiring separate, uh, separate utilities or separate, uh, um, you know, furnace, water heater, all that stuff.
Two, two gas meters, two electric.
And the, and the two hour fire separation between the two is that the owner lives there. They're familiar with their property, easily accessible. Um, there's just, they, the, the argument was the risk is lower than having your duplex or townhome scenario. And so, of course, you know, it's like the camel's getting his nose in. And now you have all of these ADUs turned duplexes. And of course, some of the concerns are, well, you, you don't have that protection uh, for the, the occupants, for the residents, as you would in a, in a duplex in a townhome. But that would be a state, statewide discussion because it's a, in the state construction code.
Great.
It's a tough, it's a tough discussion that there's no resolve right now.
Nice.
Great.
Awesome. Any other burning questions? Otherwise, part of this will come up again in another item as we're talking about some things too, so.
I'm ready to move forward. Unless anyone has notes on the councils. Okay, I'll move to approve the accessory dwelling unit program as presented.
I have a first by Jake.
I have a second.
Second by Van. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. Okay. All right, thank you so much.
We did have a call a few years ago from a basement occupant that the upstairs was rented out and, or occupied. And they couldn't access their utility box. They were calling the city, how do I get my power turned back on? Something happened and it, and it blew a fuse and it was in the middle of the winter and I just said, you've gotta call your, your owner and they couldn't reach him, and so.
Interesting.
Stuff happens, but.
Dang.
Oh, it's hard. Lots of unintended consequences of different thoughts.
Lot of, lot of friendly neighbors that are.
Okay, we'll move on. We have two more discussion items. And Mike, you're overseeing both. So we'll do the moderate income zoning incentives.
Uh, so last year I, I provided the council some information on uh goals number five and number three on, um, how do we, you know, what, what are some zoning incentives, um, that we could look at? And then also, um, how do we use our moderate income housing set aside funds? And, and so, maybe first we can talk about goal number five. It says, implement zoning incentives for moderate income hu- units in new developments. So, the, the implementation plan is in twenty twenty-three with, I'd provide you some best practices. I did that last July or, or August. And then in twenty twenty-four, we'll review some of those recommendations. And so some of the things that I, I've seen done, um, that cities have talked about is reducing parking requirements for moderate income units or developments, increase allowable height. And so if you, so basically, um, you know, we allow a forty-eight foot height in most zones. Um, so you, you know, if, if you have some modern, if you're going to do some moderate income housing units, maybe we increase the height of the building, let them go a little bit higher so they can increase the number of units to, to help pay for that. Um, a density bonus, you know, maybe you're allowed a certain percentage, an increase in density if you provide, um, some additional, uh, moderate income housing units. Um, expedited review and permitting, um, you know, it, do you, would you, if they allow so many units to be affordable, do you allow them to be a permitted use? You know, that, that's, that's, you know, that's a little bit harder because you'd have to then adopt some s- design standards and, and things like that that, uh, we don't currently have as far as multifamily design standards. Uh, uh, another one would be maybe reduce open space requirement if you're within so many feet of a park, public park or, or public area, public facility. So tho- those are kinda some things I was thinking about. I, I know there's plenty of more out there, but, um, you know, I, I'd like to maybe to have a, a brief discussion on what are some zoning incentives you think we could do that I could, I could start working with the planning commission on, uh, to bring you some recommendations?
I, I guess one question I had at the get-go about the whole thing before I thought of incentives is, how do we ensure the longevity of a moderate income unit? Because it seems like once it gets sold and it just can go to, back to the land of not being moderate in. So I just thought, all these things we could try to incentivize and build and then they become not affordable so fast. And so, are there mechanisms? I know that we have some units that the housing authority help oversee. And so there's like a cap on things, but with these, if they're just being sold and they're not as expensive as others, I don't know, there's a part of me that thought, to, to what end? You know, we're incentivizing them for a moment.
So ti- typically there's some type of deed restriction that's recorded on, on the property. Whether it's, you've gotta have ten units or it's these specific units that are, that are affordable.
Okay.
You know, we, you know, parking, we, you know, we currently require two parking spaces per unit. Do we, you know, maybe we look at one and a quarter, or, or sorry, one and three quarters or something like that if it's a moderate income unit? Or, you know, is, is there something that, you know, might be easy that we could, um, could look at that's not impacting too much, uh, right now? So, maybe just a general discussion that I could come back at another time after I've worked with the planning commission a little bit.
For me, I'm uncomfortable putting parking on the road.
Yeah.
Just designed that way. They're gonna do it anyway.
Yeah.
But uh, I like that the option is that they're not. That just, for me, clutters up.
Yeah.
That, it won't be a surprise to you. Density's not my favorite thing by any means. Uh, the, the additional height, I think I could get on board with, depending on how that was done.
Yeah, and where it's done too, if it's, you know, if it's, you know, if it's done on a, I don't know, but right now we don't have a zone for multifamily, so, you know, that, that's something we would have to.
Yeah, to- topography makes that something easier, but something I would consider. Uh, anything that makes Bryce work faster having to do an expedited review.
I mean, open space is something we, we could look at as well if you're within, you know, a half mile of a park. Or I'm just throwing that number out. It, you know, we'd have to study that more, but you know, if you're, you know, maybe you're, you're, you could, you reduce your open space requirement in that development from twenty percent to fifteen percent or something like that. You know, because people can access the public park easier. So, so my, my goal with this is to present you some of these ideas, see if anything you like, if you have any other ideas and then, and work with the planning commission to bring you something back later this year.
I, I don't have additional ideas, unfortunately. Um, the height was something that was the more palatable, depending on where. Um, I could imagine in certain places it would get folks coming and talking about blocking their mountain view or what view. But the height was of those the most, the one that floated up most to me.
Less miserable.
Yes, yes. I, you have a tough thing because I don't like any of, I mean, there's a part of me I'm like, ah, man, no, 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 no. But I know that there's constraints, so I'm trying to work. But I know that there's constraints, so I'm trying to work within the constraints to say, least bad, you know?
Like, I think Avalon, I believe, I think they're forty-eight feet, and I, I believe they're four stories, or three stories, I, I, I can't remember, but. Um, I want to say I thought they were four, but, but we also have that requirement, that, that step down requirement in our ordinance as well, that, that we require.
I appreciate your approach to this, Mike, time after time. Um, I think you hear us and understand where we're coming from, from density, for the most part, as a council. Um, and as a city, as a culture, um, you know, and, and looking for ways to meet the plan, and yet not change the kind of feel of our city, and so, I, I agree with them, maybe the height one was one that felt less intrusive, but.
You know, I'll just throw out a political statement. When these things were first being presented, uh, certain senators in our state were saying, this is not about density, and I begged to disagree with them almost completely.
So.
What else can we get, yeah?
I, I mean, what do you think of the open space?
So those were my two, was the height.
Height and open space were two for me.
Space.
And, you know, I'd have to be creative in writing something that says, hey, for, for, you know, I don't know where I'd put that in the code, would have to brainstorm and, and things, but, you know, that's something we can look at. And, and that, you know, and, and it may be next year when I'm bringing this back to you, you know, is, what, my, my implementation plan is that you're reviewing something this year, but we necessarily don't have to adopt it this year, it's just something we'll start working on and reviewing it with you, with you and the planning commission.
So, so come up with ten ideas, but just do them one at a time, so they can.
Well, we're going kicking and screaming a little bit.
We still got three more years of this, so we may, we may be doing one thing at a time, so.
And always keep in mind, my non-scientific survey, when I talk to neighbors and people in Linden, why did you move to Linden? Open space is the answer, far and away. I, I don't know if I get anything else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, keep in mind, that's, that's the backdrop of where I come from.
And I think in the mass, the general plan, that there were configurations where they had some homes closer together, but they still had the places still enjoyed the same amount of space, but the homes were closer together in some configuration, and they had like a neighborhood park almost. So, I don't know if it's a reduction or a shuffling, so that they're still the same, but it still comes back to what you said, it's still problematic, but.
I mean, another zoning strategy, we could look at our, our two overlay zone. I mean, we only have one district left of the eighteen districts that have any room, and that's, there's three lots up on the hillside on the, you know, nor, south, east side of the community with three lots on a steep hillside, and that's about all we have left. Uh, you know, that's, that's something we could look at too, if we, do we want to allow one more unit in each district or something, so.
One of the things that we typically hear from developers when they come, they say, don't push back about density because we know how to do density well in the design. And, and I agree with that, that some densities are designed better, and I don't know how you quantify that in a implementation that. I'm just kind of throwing that out, because yes, there are some designs that looks a whole lot better when it's the same density in side-by-side projects on how they do it, but I don't know how you can write that up.
That was kind of the goal of that planned residential development overlay we did for Tilia Court and Songbird. You know, we, we created an overlay zone, and the state allows you to do residential design standards in an overlay zone. So that, that's kind of what we were getting there, I, you know, I don't know if that's something you'd want to look at again or not, but. But that, that created a little bit more density on smaller lots, but. So.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll take those two ideas to the planning commission, and they may have some additional of their own, and, and so, we'll start discussing that with them. I, I, one thing they've wanted to talk about too is, on flag lots, um, about maybe narrowing up the twenty-five foot access. Um, you know, may, maybe that's an incentive we look at and have it, you know, a little bit more narrow. I think for fire code, you have to have at least twenty or six, sixteen or twenty, but maybe we narrow that down as an incentive or something, I, I don't know, we'll, we'll look at it.
Thanks for doing that. Great, um, and then we'll go to the last one.
Yeah, the last one was, uh, let me just show you on the map here, so we have two RDA areas. We've got the Linden Park RDA, uh, which is uh, for the Kia dealership that's under construction, and then we have our seven hundred north RDA. Um, and so, we're required by state code, when those were developed, we're required to use a percentage of the tax increment off of those um, to use for affordable housing. It used to be, up until this last legislative session, that like the seven hundred north, C, it's called a CDA, community development area, the, the money, that housing money had to stay in that area. Uh, the Linden Park one didn't, um, and the money that we create off there, I think it's, let me make sure I'm saying this right. It's five percent off the Linden, uh, off the, um, let's see, seven hundred north CDA, we're required to keep five percent of that.
Forever and ever?
During the life of the project area, and we're supposed to use that.
Twenty.
We're supposed to use that for affordable housing, and so currently, we have about forty-seven thousand set aside in that fund. Uh, the Kia dealership, because it's not yet cons- um, on the tax rolls, we don't ha- we haven't earned anything off of that, and that one has to be five percent. The seven hundred north CDA, you used to have to maintain that ten percent in that area. This year, the state legislature passed House Bill four sixty-five that allowed us, or allowed an RDA to um, s- use their set of side funds, um, that, to sign an interlocal agreement with another community. So let's say Provost City was doing some type of affordable housing, we could take our forty-seven thousand dollars and help them um, with some affordable housing, if, if they, you know, if they had a project. So, what it says is the set of fu- side funds must be spent, encumbered, or otherwise planned for within six years of set aside funds being deposited. So it allows us to sign an interlocal agreement with another community, um, that, for affordable housing, so, um.
Your, your first comment was that it had to be used within that CDA area.
Yes.
I assume we can use it anywhere in the city now, as well, we don't just have to.
Now with this new bill, we can use it, we can sign an interlocal agreement, use it anywhere.
What would that look like? Signing an interlocal to do what?
So, say Orem is, so, so I'll say Provo is, their, their redevelopment agency is looking at buying some property. Well, we, we could, we could sign an inter- interlocal agreement that, you know, we will help participate in that with our forty-seven thousand dollars, or what, or whatever we're getting over.
Accomplishing the goal of.
Yes, then we report to the state that, hey, this is what we've done, and this is what, this is what Provo City has accomplished with that over the, that last six years, or maybe it's Salt Lake, maybe it, you know, I, we, we could reach out to some other communities. Um, or maybe we use those RDA funds to do something with our own city, um, to help with affordable housing now, you know? So, those are, those are, those are things we'll have to, to look at. Some of the examples I said, um, you know, to partnering with the developer. So Castlewood Development has, um, the property under seven hundred north under contract. They, i- if we were to give an incentive to a retailer down there, um, we have to build some housing as part of that. You know, that, maybe we help Castlewood, um, we, we, so we could look at some different policies uh, this year on how we want, maybe want to spend those, those funds. Um, you could waive impact fees in that area, um, in seven hundred north, using that forty-seven thousand dollars, you could, you could help with that.
You would pay those fees out of the forty-seven thousand dollars?
That's correct, yep, we would re- reimburse the city uh, for that. Um, and so there's some different options there, um.
So, Mike, the city owns these three rentals over here, could we invest the money into those for needed repairs or upgrades, but then commit to only rent them at eighty percent AMI or something like that?
Are they rented right now?
I like that idea because we're moving our asset, you know, that has value. Any day if we had to, I don't know, probably tear those down and put something there before we'd ever sell them, but.
I think I'd want to just check.
If you want to consider.
Cause.
Right now, there's no rental gap.
Yeah, I, I would want to check that, bec- because the new state law allows us to partner with another community, it says. Other than that, I don't know if those funds have to stay in an RDA area. That, that'd be my only thing we'd have to look at.
So it might be that has to be used in the RDA or with another municipality?
So like the, the city, the, the state law this year, that House Bill four sixty-five, that allows us to sign an interlocal agreement with another community, um, to use our funds. But the state law previous to that says, at least in the seven hundred north area, it has to be used in that area. The Kia dealership, I think you, you've got a little bit more flexibility that maybe you could use on these homes here.
Have you seen uh, what other communities are proposing and doing? That, is that where you're pulling these ideas from?
Some, some of these, yeah, I, 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 I started to go through some of the reports that, um, other cities posted from last August.
Yeah, just looking at somebody else's come up with a great idea.
Yeah, and I, I can continue to look at those, like, um, Brigham City was doing, they're doing some impact fee reimbursements. Um, Cedar City's partnering with a housing authority, Cottonwood Heights. Um, it's going out and purchasing pro- their RDA is purchasing property for affordable housing. Um, I don't know where Bluffdale's getting all their money, but it said they're putting a million dollars towards affordable housing.
Jeez.
Um, but, but I only went, I only started to go through the A, B, C, you know, I didn't get to very many. I, like I said, I only went through Bluffdale, Brigham City, and Cottonwood Heights, and Cedar, that's as far as I got, because the reports are huge. And so, I only got through the Bs and Cs so far.
Nice.
But yeah, I can continue to look at those as well, so. But I, but I'd probably like to bring you back later, you know, um, maybe even in the next month or so, before August first, so, some ideas. I know we only got two or three more meetings, so I'd like to maybe have one more discussion on at least this item for the RDA incentives, uh, before August first.
And I think we took credit for that partnering with, oh, that facility that goes into Hollow Park with the housing authority. I think you've already.
I've reported on that, but I, yeah, that's.
I, on the ones you have here, I mean, the idea of paying the impact fees, that made sense to me. We have a, a, an experience with partnering with the housing authority, and a well-placed opportunity like that also made sense to me. The down payment things didn't immediately grab me.
Um. Earlier tonight, we were talking about that mobile home court, I wonder if there's options to look at.
Yeah.
Some, some grant programs to help building improvements and.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of ways, how can we keep it in Linden?
I would love to see it keep us.
Sure.
Keep it in Linden and beautify some of those areas and.
And I think.
Mm-hmm.
That trailer park, is it in the RDA? Oh, no, it's right here, isn't it?
Just outside.
So, um, just wanted to get this on your radar, that we can start thinking about it, and I can come back in a few weeks and.
Yeah, the principle of having the money circulate within seems great. Repairing our assets or paying off fees that we're, that seems to be good.
Okay.
Other comments, recommendations? Alright.
And I know you have a ton of work that you do there, thank you very much.
It's a lot.
And we throw out a little comment that can equal hours and hours for you, I know, I know that's recognized.
Why don't you look through a thousand pages of, Ctrl F, yeah?
Mike, you was one of the few submittals for Linden that actually passed, um, on the first time around this last year.
Nice.
You put in a lot of effort, uh, a lot of cities had their, their programs kicked back, and they had to spend a lot of it, but there's some time.
And thanks for walking that line for us, you know, you, you have a, a push against, and you're trying to put, you're stuck in between two pressure points with things, so thanks.
Servant to master.
Excellent, I think that's all we've got, I would entertain.
Just have one more item.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry, I, that's right, fortunate A and B.
He wants to move to the next item, he's moving along.
Let's, let's go to fifteen, um, on fees.
So I, I'm gonna turn the time over to Bryce on this, but, um, we, we've been looking at our building uh, inspection fees and building permit fees, and we, we want to have a discussion that, to include uh, these updates in the, in the budget. We should have had these to you a few weeks ago to include in this year's budget, uh, with the consolidated fe- consolidated fee schedule changes, but uh, we wanted to bring these up to you tonight so they could be re- be reviewed as a public hearing in two weeks, or, uh, for that budget.
Our intent, this is just discussion, this is a heads up of these possible changes, and if you're okay, we're gonna move forward in two or three weeks with the final budget.
Bryce, I'll let you.
Okay, so I started, uh, about a year ago, looking at where the building department is, um, as far as, you know, revenues and expenses, my goal as a building official is that we break even each year. Um, that the, the residents are not subsidizing, um, the construction projects happening. And, uh, of course, the Home Builders Association is pushing ag- against the cities that are subsidizing other things in the city with the, um, permit revenue uh, that comes in, I, I don't, just having that happy medium is my goal, so. Uh, we went through and looked at, you know, what is the, we've got one inspector, one building official, and we, and we use two of, uh, the, uh, the gals in the office, you know, partially for business licensing and planning, and then, of course, building department. So, uh, worked through just the whole, um, as of, uh, from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, what the expenses and so forth were. Um, I also looked at, um, plan reviews that were being done on projects that they never end up doing the project, uh, such as the, what was that, sports?
There was a indoor sports facility that wanted to go on the northwest.
Seven hundred north.
End of seven hundred north.
Yeah, so we did a full, uh, did a full first time plan review, they had a significant list of things that needed to be addressed, but um, I think they paid a hundred dollars or something, or maybe two hundred or something for that review, so that the city definitely paid for um, that review, and so, that's, that's of course not ideal. Um, and then, anyway, we'll get into some other things as well in here, so. On the, the fee updates, the first one here is a building permit deposit, we currently call it a performance cash bond. The old mentality is, um, which doesn't work anymore because it's not legal, is we want some money to make sure you finish the project. And, uh, and that doesn't, that doesn't fly anymore, it's, again, that's not a legal, uh, thing to do, and so we look more at what's the intent? Well, the intent is if they damage the public improvements, that they, that they fix it, but if they walk away, then what, who's gonna pay for that? And so, the, the building to permit deposit is to, uh, is to cover that. So currently, as you can see there, uh, we collect for the, SFD is single-family dwelling, SFTH is single-family townhome, and then the duplexes, currently we collect a thousand dollars. Um, unfortunately, we have six, uh, since last August, who forfeited their, um, their, uh, bond money because, uh, one of them just abandoned the project, the others just didn't want to comply, they didn't want to fix or replace what needed to be done, and it costs more than a thousand dollars to do so. So, where's the incentive there? So, uh, what I did is, um, reached out to Noah and Trent, um, in Public Works Department, went off of the bid schedule for what it costs the city to replace concrete in the public improvements and such. And based on the, the reasonable probability of damage that's done during the construction process, um, it was approaching five thousand dollars on the, uh, single-family homes especially. Um, and then about three thousand, um, on the others, and so that's where I came up with the, the proposed numbers, uh, collecting that five hundred dollar, or excuse me, five thousand dollar, um, bond uh, for homes, uh, single family, and then three thousand per unit on the others. They get the money back as long as they. They get the money back as long as they, of course, as long as they replace what they needed to. Um and then also on pools and other residential structures, detached ADUs, uh detached garages, retaining walls, other things that are likely to have um equipment that would damage the public improvements and cost the city money. Based on my calculations, twenty-five hundred dollars was reasonable um for that, to cover that. Same thing on the demolition, um obviously, once they they can have to bring in some track holes or back holes or whatever they need to and trailers. When it comes to commercial projects, uh it's such a wide range of, I mean, who knows how much damage or whatever, so that would be up to the engineering department to determine what that would look like. On the permit application fee.
Quick, do you have any questions on that table before we?
No, fully refundable, and I hope that our culture is one to return them quickly, or do we hold them for a year after?
That's a different bond.
Yeah, so when they develop, on the development side, they'll hold, of course, bond money there, and then they go into a warranty period, this is more of a repair.
Okay, so.
So even if they're in a warranty period, would still collect this bond because the uh the homes may still be under construction and not have a certificate of occupancy once they are out of the warranty period, and we still need that incentive or that ability to cover the cost of.
This is sidewalk, curb, and gutter.
This is, and this is all public, so if there's no, if there's no public sidewalk, curb, gutter, and there's no requirement to have that, then we collect no bond.
Just, we had six walk away, said just keep your thousand dollars this year, right?
Yep.
Were more expensive than.
More expensive, yeah.
And I was able to meet with uh Mike and Bryce, and we talked about this for several hours. Did we get any follow-up on if there's any, so I'm a builder, I come in, I do this, I've left some damage, and now I'm coming back to do another project? If there's, and maybe we don't use the term bond, if if I've forfeited something, have if I've left damage, does that, i- is there ways to, hey, you can't pull another permit until that's completed? Do you, did we get any information from Brian or anything on that, or?
We did not.
I didn't.
But I can look at that.
I mean, so if you're getting a habitual builder that, hey, I'm just walking, and I know that this would help solve that with the higher rates, but if there's something else to.
I'll have to look at state law again, I know that there are some changes that may potentially allow for that, but I don't believe so. I think by collecting the bond, that essentially pays for it. So and the hope is, is that we collect either exactly how much it costs or maybe a little more, I don't know. And they're just out the money, I I have not many defaults or walk away from five thousand. So it's significant enough. Um on the permit application fee, currently known as the building permit application deposit, this goes back to the conversation of plan reviews, the whole intent of this is to pay for a portion or all of the plan review upfront so that the city is not out. I will say that if we do a first time plan review or half of a plan review, and they abandon the project and they ask if they can get a refund, I'm gonna look at how much has the city spent so far? And if it's less than what they paid, then um I have been known to refund the difference. So I'm just throwing it out there, but I don't have that in a policy necessarily. Um currently, we collect a hundred dollars for um single-family homes, all of your dwellings, three hundred for tenant improvements, three hundred for multifamily and commercial. It's not a lot when it comes to plan reviews. Um so on the uh the proposed, of course, as you can see, five hundred on homes, which to me is is much more reasonable um and would come closer to covering the cost of the plan reviews, on the commercial would simply um charge the full, for the full amount. Any questions on that?
What is that, the full plan review?
I'm sorry.
Sixty-five percent of building, I guess I don't know the range of numbers that that would be.
Yeah, so I should have explained that, so the the plan review fee, and this is in current, in the current fee schedule, for a house, the plan review fee is twenty-five percent of the building permit fee, and that's just how it's calculated. So you have the building permit fee, and then to cover the cost of the plan review, you take twenty-five percent of that. Commercial, it's sixty-five percent, and that's in line with just about every other city. That's a, that's a recommended number from this International Code Council. Any questions on those? Sign permit, um we're currently uh in accordance with the uh the current fee schedule, um the permit fee is based on the valuation. I struggle with that because whether the sign's a million dollars or five hundred dollars, if it's this type of sign, we're gonna have this many inspections, it's gonna cost relatively about the same, no matter how much money, if they wanna make it out of gold or platinum or something, you know, it's gonna have the same cost to the city, so. Um and talking with Mike, we came up with uh what we feel is a reasonable flat fee schedule based on the type of sign as based on the the processing time of the planning department and the inspection time on our side and the review time. And that's how we came up with those those numbers.
How are those compared to other cities?
I don't know. I know there are other cities, and I've worked at other cities that's still based on valuation, and I I just don't like it. I think it's not fair to the customer.
That's one I'd I'd even consider subsidizing personally, I think about our uh sales tax revenues, I think about our business community. That's something that's come up as I've talked to businesses in the past, you know, I I I consider Linden very much a business-friendly city. And the very few times that I do hear complaints, it's not, maybe not always, but I I have heard complaints on occasion about, hey, let me do the same types of signs as other places, hey. Uh signs seem to come up with our with our business community, and so maybe are we, is this an action item, no?
If you can just. I'll look into that.
If you'll just look into other cities, make sure we're not, you know, I'd hate, I'd hate if our sister cities were significantly lower than us and were, you know, a- again, going back to the conversation of we don't ever want anyone to not do business here because of something we've decided, and so something to look at, if you look into that, that'd be great.
Yeah, are there any?
Something out this week comparing those.
Yeah, good, perfect. Are there any specific cities that you want me to look at?
I would say, you know, if I'm a small business and I'm looking to locate in this area, you're not going more than one or two cities. So our our neighboring sister cities, maybe Vineyard as well, I would say.
Vineyard, Provo, Warham, PG.
Yeah.
American Fort.
You're probably great, great right there.
Okay, I'll do that. Any other comments, questions on that?
No.
Uh additional plan review, this just establishes uh a fee in the fee schedule. Um this is based on the cost of the city, it's actually a little lower. Uh if I'm doing the plan review, it's about where the the inspector is, it's includes all the overhead and so forth, the eighty-five dollars an hour.
So you don't charge anything right now?
I do, it's just not in the fee schedule. I I don't charge this very often, and and when this comes into play is when there's a contractor who perpetually may be in a development. Unfortunately, we've, we have had this here, uh and they submit the same documents with no intent to follow what they're submitting, they just want the permit. And so we, I always review what's what's um submitted. And even when I ask the question, look, we haven't been doing this, you keep submitting something different later because it doesn't comply, are we doing the same thing, and the comment I got back was, we'll take care of it at four-way. And so I said, okay, well, you know, if I review this, then I'm gonna charge you a re-review fee if that's not what's put in. And that just discourages the, uh it's a time waster, you know? Uh also, after a permit's issued, if there's a significant change after the fact, it requires a plan review that takes an hour, two, or three, or more, then we've already gone through the process and they've paid for that time review process already, so then I charge that re-review fee.
And we have a fee for the city engineer, we have one for the planner, you know, it's it's good, I think, to establish one for the building official as well.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? Uh similar for re-inspection fee, uh we, while Gary was here, he had some perpetual frustration of showing up and things not being ready, and so we just had to start charging them because it was costing us too much, and this just establishes what that fee is. Uh miscellaneous, uh otherwise known uh as over-the-counter permits. Uh currently, we charge forty-five dollars, and that doesn't cover much, it doesn't even cover the cost of one inspection, let alone the processing time of the gals. Um and then if something is not compliant, then of course.
So if someone replaces their water heater, they're supposed to get a permit for that?
Yes.
I was not aware of that.
An inspection?
Should be, it's all.
Surprises me.
The natural gas uh is probably the the biggest driver of that, so any appliance that uses natural gas.
And is it the, you know, I I hire a plumber, he's, he would typically handle that process.
Some do and some don't, it's kind of like basement finishes, some do, some don't.
Interesting.
What if I replace my dry, my dryer, clothes dryer, and it's on gas?
Uh it's an appliance. It's not required.
I would, I mean, what's the percentage you think of these that that actually do it, is it fifty-fifty? You think you're getting?
Probably less.
Less that are coming in and getting the the permit and.
Especially if it's a smaller plumbers. Some of your larger plumbers, um they they get permits, every single one, it's it's a liability thing for one.
Yeah.
Uh an accountability thing for another, it's it's kind of like paying insurance.
Do we low, keep it low to encourage that, or do we?
So I live in Saratoga Springs, and they did for quite a while, which I won't share my opinion on that, but um did free basement permits, you just paid for it when you built the house, basically, was my understanding. Um I don't know if it made any difference, uh worked, uh when I was a draper, they um they kept the fee low, and they found that it made no difference, and so they just simply said, well, we're gonna recoup more of that money than the cost to the city, and it and it really didn't lower at the number of people that get permits.
So this fee covers the inspection and the processing or whatever? So a a city person goes out with an AC replacement to do an inspection, interesting.
Yeah, so we look at um let's be sure that the venting is correct, the vent pipe's not disconnected somewhere, which I've seen, I've uh had gas leaks, I've had, uh we're in a seismic zone, so things get shaken around, so water heaters is a big deal, it needs to be strapped. Um in a seismic event, if it falls over, breaks the gas line, then of course, imagination kind of goes to whatever could happen there. You don't want any explosions.
If this is gas-specific, do you need?
It's not gas-specific, but um water heaters, not many people do electric, especially in residential settings. Almost everyone does gas. Furnaces, of course, pretty much everything here is gas, on the air conditioning, um if you've got wiring, uh also have some breaker size uh requirements on that that are commonly missed, the breakers are too big. So on the re-roof, it applies to tear off and re- reshingle.
I'm curious how many council members have not paid their permit fee for one of those four items, because uh guilty's charged, I've got a rental in Provo that we just replaced the water heater on, and golly, I'm a sinner.
Need some more public education.
I guess, man, that's what we're here for.
Not surprising.
Sure, that's news to me too.
Yeah, I've, I mean, most, most of the time it's good. Uh we've had, had some over the years, some pretty significant gas leaks and other problems and uh carbon monoxide issues and so forth, so.
Well, I think, you know, I think these are great, I think you have a tough job, very, you're very much customer-facing, and and our our reputation very much uh relies on you, I think about American Fork City and and the tough things they've had with their planning, with their zoning, with their uh you know, with their building department and uh appreciate you, what you're doing, and you know, appreciate, you have to value, you know, the importance of lives with, you know, reasonable and rational thought and and being flexible and trying to help people. It's it's a difficult job, very similar to Mike in that other position of like serving two masters, but we appreciate you being graceful with our, with our, you know, all those in Linden and and doing the best you can, and and I know you're doing a great job of that.
Appreciate that. Good stuff. Uh one last thing I want to talk about is valuation, because everything else, most things are based on value, the value of construction. Whatever the cost is currently on the left, uh is the simple statement, it's very subjective on how we value buildings, the reason why it's important to understand how we value is that's what we base the majority of the permit fees on, especially on houses, commercial projects, et cetera. Um I want to clarify, and I want to make it clear, uh similar to other cities, how that's done. Um the International Code Council publishes every six months an update on the national averages, uh most cities use that, some use a hundred percent, some use eighty percent, some ninety percent. Things have skyrocketed since twenty-twenty, as we all know. Uh in my opinion, based on the research I've done, we're we're getting pretty close to a hundred percent of what the national average is here in Utah. Talking with Ab and Mike, we felt like going with ninety-five percent of what the national average is published by the International Code Council is uh is where we'd like to be and use that figure in calculating the permit fees. So um the current fee schedule references the nineteen ninety-seven Uniform Building Code, which is obsolete, but they're the last, they don't even exist anymore, but they're the last ones that created a calculation method of figuring permit fees. And so everybody still uses that because that was, that's all we have. So we apply that to ninety-five percent of the national average published by ICC, and that's how we come up with the building permit fee. That's both for um the majority of your residential and uh commercial, other than the things that we want through signs and and the over-the-counter permits.
How were we doing valuation prior to this suggestion?
Uh currently, when I came on board, um they were using the twenty-twenty data, which uh since, from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three, increased thirty-five percent, thirty-five to thirty-six percent in the value or in the cost of construction. In twenty-twenty-four, the latest data came down just a tiny bit. What's happened is that it kind of gets us behind on being able to cover the cost of the city, wages, of course, go up, the cost of gas goes up, the cost of everything has gone up, so. My proposal is to use every February's um date, so let me back up just a little, the the current method of valuing um is subjective, and so Mike didn't want me to, he didn't feel comfortable without coming to you uh to update and you, and jump up that thirty-five percent without having a discussion. We're not quite going, we're going up about twenty-eight percent is where we're at.
So with your opening comment, is we're trying to break even on building permit costs and those types of things, does this, and I know it'll be reviewed, does this twenty-eight percent, do you think it'll skew it too far, or?
I don't, I don't, um there's a couple of things, uh the the reporting of the valuation, which is kind of a side benefit, will be more accurate. But when it comes to covering the cost, we were uh, we didn't cover costs based on my my figures from between twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. I think it was like thirty-five hundred dollars, it wasn't huge, um but we were under uh looking at, uh and that didn't include the um the wage increase, which we very much appreciate and grateful for uh for you guys of last July, and it didn't include the increase from last December either. And so what what the natural um outcome of using the the current data on the value of cost of construction is as cost of construction. data on the value of cost of construction is, as cost of construction goes up, the cost of permits go up, and that naturally, in theory, should cover the rising wages and the rising cost of everything else, all the overhead. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and and that's what I like, is that that approach that.
Yeah. This this is a common, this is the traditional method. A lot of the, all of the cities that I researched, I looked at Draper. Of course, I worked in Draper for almost ten years. They use a hundred percent of the valuation. I looked at Lehigh, American Fork. Didn't get a response from Pleasant Grove, uh Vineyard, um Orem, all of our sister cities, and they're, they all use the same method. They all have, or act, I should say, two of them kinda created their own little hybrid. But this is just a natural and easy way to to stay up to date. I would like to look at this uh at the end of this coming fiscal year and see where we're at.
Could you get us some information and and maybe just a median house, uh what it would have been, what it's proposed to, what that cost difference looks like? But then also a comparison to our, again, sister cities to see where we're at with with the new proposal, or maybe and current as well, to see where that puts us. That's a pretty big jump.
I'm so glad you asked that.
You're ready, right here. You wanna just email that to us? We don't need to go over it now. If you'll just email that to us.
I'll do that.
You were ready to go, though. I like.
I was ready. I knew you were gonna ask that.
Nice job.
Great.
Appreciate your patience and.
No, any other feedback? I guess the only, the thing that I, that the residential, so that's like a state mandated thing that we're doing? That you need to inspect those things, that you need to have permits, or that's just like a practice?
It's it's a.
With your discipline, that's a practice?
State construction code.
Okay. I was gonna say. Anything like that, I would just like, ugh.
And any feedback that that you get from the public for, you know, complaints or whatever. I mean, we're here to serve and get with Mike or me or Adam or whoever. We're we're here to help and and still.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, Van, do your thing.
Make a motion to adjourn.
There's a first.
Second.
Second. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.